I would like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of March 15th, 2016. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson.
Here.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Here.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Here.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Here. The first item on our agenda this evening would be the Recreation Parks Volunteer of the Month, and I will be making that presentation. For over a decade, Kristina Sinko has been involved with the Special Olympics of Northern Santa Barbara County VIP Dinner fundraiser. Annually, the VIP Dinner raises thousands of dollars to promote and coordinate athletics for hundreds of our special needs community members. Mrs. Sinko has been a key supporter of this fundraiser, dedicating her time and effort towards the success of the event. Mrs. Sinko is a creative and resourceful volunteer. She's used her skills to solicit prizes for the event's silent auction, has arranged the donated items into appealing gift baskets for the display at the event, resulting in a successful auction each year. In addition, Mrs. Sinko has prepared thank you gifts for the 100 volunteers that assist with the event. Lastly, at each event, Mrs. Sinko oversees the group of wine room volunteers, ensuring the hundreds of generous guests enjoy a fabulous dinner and fundraising event experience. The Santa Maria Parks and Park Department and Northern Santa Barbara County Special Olympics is lucky to have Mrs. Sinko volunteer to assist with this worthwhile event. Mrs. Sinko is always eager to help good causes in the Santa Maria community. You may have also seen or heard her advocating for ovarian cancer awareness, helping to educate women through the public speaking engagements, and raising funds for cancer research. The Santa Maria City Council is pleased to express its gratitude for her commitment to raising funds for athletes and intellectual disabilities served by Special Olympics of the Northern Santa Barbara County, and looks forward to her assistance in the years to come. And I am very proud to be giving this to Kristina Sinko, and that was the best choice Phil Sinko made when he married her.[156.34][156.34](Laughter). Anyway, Kristina, would you come forward?[161.34][161.34](Applause).
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, City officials, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. This is quite an honor for many reasons, and I'm sorry that my husband isn't here to hear what Alice said.[198.12][198.12](Laughter). He'll have to wait for a couple of days and look online and listen to what was said. But for many reasons, being a longtime native of the city, for many reasons, recreation parks is very special to me. Probably most importantly, it was my first job when I was a junior in high school. I worked for Alex as a recreation aide, and it was my first job ever where I actually got some money. Back then, it seemed to be decent money. And VIP is very, very special to me. Over the years, I've met many wonderful people and gotten to know a lot of people in the city. And interestingly enough, it was VIP that brought me and my husband together. That's where I actually met Philip, through Cindy. So I feel very honored, and thank you so much. And I will work in the years to come to continue to help make this event very successful. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda this evening is a proclamation, and Councilmember Zuniga will be making that presentation.
Thank you. I'm pleased to be able to present this proclamation in recognition of Ag Day. Whereas National Agriculture Week is March 13th through 19th, 2016, honoring the agriculture industry for providing safe, abundant, and affordable products, a strong economy, conservation of environmental resources, a source of renewable energy, and a world of job opportunities. And whereas the Santa Maria Valley agricultural industry helps feed the world, fuels our local economy, and contributes to the Santa Barbara County economic output of almost $2 billion worldwide. And whereas the agriculture industry is the largest employer in the Santa Maria Valley and provides more than 25,000 jobs in Santa Barbara County, such as farm owners, harvesters, irrigators, truck drivers, scientists, researchers, pest control and fertilizer advisors, processors, shippers, brokers, retailers, and agricultural business owners. And whereas the Santa Maria Valley Chapter of California Women for Agriculture annually provides thousands of dollars in scholarships for school gardens, teachers who wish to attend Ag in the classroom seminars, and local high schools and students pursuing a college education in the agricultural field. Now therefore, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, does hereby recognize March 15th, 2016, as Ag Day in the City of Santa Maria, and encourages residents and businesses to participate in activities supporting the work of those involved with the Santa Maria Valley agricultural industry. And accepting the proclamation this evening is Roberta Alderete and Kathy Fisher.[367.02][367.02](Applause).
I was fortunate to work in agriculture during my summers in high school, and also during my summers at college, and graduated from Cal Poly in Ag Business Management. And fortunate also to represent the industry today. I work in agriculture still, supporting agriculture. And we have worked very hard today. We went to Blockman School this morning and participated in Ag Day with the children there, with other ag organizations. And then this afternoon, we went to the Santa Maria Boys and Girls Club and celebrated Ag Day with the children in the after-school program. We celebrate Ag Day every day, and I'm sure you all appreciate the hard work that the farmworkers, and the farmers, and the ag industry people do to support not only our city but the world. And I appreciate your recognition today, and thank you.
Thank you very much.[470.02][470.02](Applause).
Madam Mayor and members, my name is Ruth Jensen. I'm a longtime member of California Women for Agriculture, and just wanted to thank you for this resolution and proclaiming today, March 15th, Ag Day for Santa Maria. California Women for Agriculture has many chapters up and down the state, about 22, and are part of the state organization California Women for Agriculture, which has over 3,000 members, and is an affiliate to American Agrowomen, where I serve as a National Food Safety Director, where they have over 50,000 members. Just wanted you to know that we're part of a bigger plan for agriculture. Thank you.
Thank you.[514.46][514.46](Applause).
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, my name is Kathy Fisher. I'm the County Agricultural Commissioner, and it truly is a pleasure being here tonight. This is the first time I've actually attended a council meeting, so it's an honor for me to be here. And thank you so much for allowing us to recognize today National Ag Day, which honors all of our farmers and ranchers for all of their hard work. And as commemorating this day, I do have just a special National Ag Day poster for your council.
Thank you.
And would like to thank also the California Women for Agriculture for all of their hard work advocating for our local farmers and ranchers in the beautiful Santa Maria Valley. So thank you.
Thank you very much.[553.54][553.54](Applause). You know, if any of you ladies would like to get involved with CWA, California Women for Agriculture, feel free to do so in contact with Roberta Alderete. It's an organization I belong to. You don't have to be in the ag industry, but it's very informative, and they get together and have a great lunch once a month, and they always have a great speaker. So you learn a lot about ag, especially since it is the big industry in our valley. Thank you, ladies, very much. The next item on our agenda this evening is a commendation, and Councilmember Boyson will be making that presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to put forth a proposal for Resolution Number 2016-21. This is a resolution of the City Council of City of Santa Maria commending Bailey Hudson on his dedicated service to the All-America City Committee. Whereas the City of Santa Maria was awarded the All-America City Award from the National Civic League in 1998, in commendation of the city's commitment in resolving community issues of the time. And whereas the All-America City Committee was formed in 1999 to continue the civic health and pride of the community through community outreach efforts. And whereas active and community-invested leaders of Santa Maria joined the All-America City Committee to ensure the civic enhancement of the community through collaboration between the public, private, and nonprofit sectors. And whereas Committee Member Bailey Hudson was an integral member of the All-America City Committee and diligently carried out its mission over a period of 15 years. And whereas he conducted outreach events, coordinated community speaker events, sponsored city-community camaraderie special events, and supported the city departments in making Santa Maria a better place to work and live. And whereas his efforts contributed to the success and continuity of the All-America City Committee. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Santa Maria as follows. Bailey Hudson is hereby commended for his dedicated service to the All-America City Committee and wished the best in future endeavors. And I would put that forth as a motion.
And I hear a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson.
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye.
And I will say that, you know, I think this is two meetings in a row that we've had Hudson receiving some sort of commendation here. And I was counting on my fingers and toes, I think, between the two of them. They have over 80 years of employment history with the City of Santa Maria, plus Bailey's 15 years of volunteerism, and probably more like 20 years if you put in all the time that he's put in on this, and all of the future endeavors of Celeste. So we really appreciate everything you've done for the City of Santa Maria family. So without further ado, I'll present this to Bailey.[760.01][760.01](Applause).
To have served on this All-American City Committee was both a real honor and a pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben.[785.43][785.43](Applause). The next item on the agenda this evening is another commendation, and Councilmember Waterfield, O'Rourke will be making that presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a dynamic duo we're talking about tonight, and you'll get the gist of it in a second. This is Resolution Number 2016-23, Resolution of the City Council of City of Santa Maria, California, commending Tahereh Masood on his dedicated service to the All-America City Committee. And so I could reiterate about everything, and I'll do it quickly. But before that, I'll just say that I was one of the representatives that went back to Mobile, Alabama in 98 to represent the city, along with 52 others, that won this award of the All-America City Committee. And some people don't quite understand what that means, other than we had three projects that the city had looked at, that we had problems with, and solved those issues, and we were recognized for that. It isn't that we don't have a pothole in town or have a problem, but that we do come together to solve issues and things, and we had the prayer tonight about coming together to try and solve a very critical issue. So I will go on. Whereas the All-America City Committee was founded in 99, and whereas active and community-invested leaders of Santa Maria joined the All-America City Committee to ensure the civic enhancement of the community through collaboration between the public, private, and nonprofits, and I'll just state Tahereh Masood has served on the board of a number of nonprofit organizations. Committee Member Tahereh Masood was a devoted member of the committee, served (laugh), we railroaded him frankly, into being, I think, the chairperson for three or four years, if I recall, and going forward. And whereas he conducted outreach events, coordinated community speaker events, sponsored city-community camaraderie special events, and supports the city departments in making Santa Maria a better place to work and live. And whereas his efforts contributed to the success and continuity of the All-America City Committee, now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the City Council, City of Santa Maria. Tahereh Masood is hereby commended for his dedicated, above and beyond service to the All-America City Committee, and wish him the best endeavors in the future. And so I would make the motion that we do vote for Resolution Number 2016-23.
It's been moved in second to approve Resolution 2016-23. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson.
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye.
And I'll just say, I never got one of these when I left the committee.[974.51][974.51](Laughter). Come on down.[976.51][976.51](Applause).
I just wanted to say thank you, Mayor, City Council, and the guests, and audience. It was my honor to serve in this All-American City Committee. And, I mean, I could not have done this by myself. I just wanted to say thank you to my wife. She's been behind me all these years, and all these late meetings, and I truly appreciate that. And once again, thank you. It was my honor to serve in this committee.
Thank you very much, Tahereh.[1023.33][1023.33](Applause). Before we move on, and in light of the recent operation the Police Department successfully conducted back on March 3rd, I'd like to ask Police Chief Martin to say a few words and provide the audience, as well as the viewing public, with an overview of what we were able to accomplish. Some people have read it in the newspaper, and some people may have heard on the radio or seen it on TV. But to get a clear picture of how enormous this was and what the Police Department accomplished, I would like Chief Martin to let everyone know in the City of Santa Maria.
Sure. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, good evening. I'd like to direct your attention up to the screen. As you know, 12 days ago, the Santa Maria Police Department engaged in Operation Matador. The investigation was actually months in the making due to the unprecedented rise in homicides beginning in July of 2015, just eight months ago. We in the department clearly understood that these homicides were not just a local street gang issue, but rather a new wave of violence never before seen in Santa Maria. I think it's incumbent that I share with you a map and actually kind of define. We often hear these terms, you know, MS-13 or Mata Salvatucha, but I think it's important that we look and see exactly what they are, where they are, and how they operate. Mata is actually a term, it's a slang term. It either means gang, or group, or clique. It actually stems from the word marabunta, which is a fierce type of ant, like a red fire ant that is dominant in Central America. Salvatucha is, actually means gorillas, because during the Civil War, they were salvatucha, they were the gorillas in El Salvador. It also means very street smart or fierce. So Mata Salvatucha was put together. If you look at the map, the dark red areas are really where they have a predominant figure and a lot of crimes attributed to them. My clicker actually doesn't work in terms of putting this on there, because it doesn't work on there, but I've asked Larry to help me out here. So if you look at, you see Mexico there, you see California above it, and then there's a number of countries right there in Central America. The very small one at the bottom there, it's kind of hard to see here, but that's El Salvador. It's not real big, but it's, that's a very... Above it to the north is Guatemala. Next to it on the eastern side is Honduras, and then below that is Nicaragua, and then you get into Costa Rica, and then into Panama, where the canal is right in there. You'll notice there's a couple of countries that don't have MS-13 in there, even though they're very close, but they've done an exceptional job in eradicating MS-13 away, out of their countries. The European country that we see, it is in Spain, over in that area there, and of course, it's in the majority of states, predominantly over in the United States on the east coast. It's in the Virginias, Richmond, Virginia, and you see it in the Carolinas, especially there, too. Four weeks prior to our operation, we knew that Boston PD was engaging in a similar operation. They arrested 37 MS-13 members. If you Google that, you'll see the operation there. They're responsible for a large drug trade in the areas of Chelsea and Everett and some of the other cities surrounding Boston. So it kind of gives you an idea of their reach there. A little square to the left, or even in the Hawaiian Islands, all the way to Alaska. We became aware, as I stated, back in July, we started to put things together mostly in September, October. This map actually represents, in the red, the actual homicides that occurred. We believe that these crimes, although they have not been charged with these crimes yet, we believe that these crimes are attributed to MS-13. We also believe the shootings that are highlighted in yellow, that is where victims survived, are also attributed to them. So of these 13 homicides and five separate shootings there. We're currently working with a number of other agencies and gathering information that will, we hope, that will prove forensically the connectivity with these crimes. We believe there were four or five guns that were used in all of these. It's also, you need to note that in the same time period last year, just to give you an idea of how it's happening in other areas, the City of Salinas, which is about half again the size larger than Santa Maria, had 40 homicides, one every nine days, and 150 shootings. So we're seeing this in a number of areas. It's not just in Santa Maria. They just came here, as I stated earlier, I think they came here to set up shop and make a statement. This was a collaborative effort. We realized back in October, November, that we would not be able to undertake this alone, not because we didn't have the experience, but because of the magnitude of it and the far-reaching aspects of it. We used the LA Sheriff's Department's crime lab, because they have one of the best forensic crime labs in the country, next to the FBI. We used the FBI. They assigned an agent to our task force that worked with us for several months, as well as ATF. On the right, you see the number of SWAT teams we had to use at 3:00 in the morning at all the different 12 locations, and we simply would not have been able to do that at one fell swoop without everybody's efforts in that. These are the first six, six suspects, all from El Salvador and Honduras. I think if you look on there, they lived on all the streets in there. You show all the streets in Santa Maria where they lived. These are the next set, next six that we identified. All of them, except for the second from the bottom, he was picked up in Bakersfield during our warrants there. And the last four, bringing it to 16. The top person there, he's the one who's in Ohio. He was arrested by the FBI for us. He is, I believe, fighting extradition. So in that case, we'll send investigators back this Thursday to attempt to interview him, and then if he continues to fight the extradition, we will secure what's commonly referred to as a governor's warrant, which he will sign, and then he will be extradited back. And then second from the bottom there is another person we arrested in Bakersfield. So if you look at the crimes down below, you don't see murder itself, but you see the conspiracy to commit murder and all of the other special allegations. There are seven crimes there. Not all of them are attributed to all seven, but six of them have, I believe, six of the crimes on there. Conspiracy to commit murder is 25 years to life. There are, we believe, as I mentioned earlier, six people who we saved from being murdered. So there are six conspiracy counts to commit murder, so they're looking at 150 years to life, or whichever comes first. These are some of the weapons that we took out of the various locations. They are similar in the type of weapons that were used in a number of our homicides. However, we're still running ballistics on them to ascertain if they are actually in fact connected. So that concludes my presentation. It's just a recap. The investigation is ongoing. It will continue to go on. All of them are going to be arraigned this Friday in groups of four to six in the Santa Maria courthouse. And I'm confident that we'll be successful in the prosecution. And like I say, we're going to continue to try to do everything we can to connect them to the crimes as best we can through forensics and people coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Martin. A number of people have called me, or I run into people, and they say, "I'm very, very proud of the Police Department." And, you know, during all this, Chief Martin was keeping us abreast of what was going on, and I'm sure I share the feelings of everyone up here. It's very difficult. You don't, you can't talk, you can't say anything, even though you know things are happening. I had a friend call me the other day after this happened, and he said to me, "I was wondering how come you guys didn't pull in the FBI?" And I go, "Well, they were already here." And he goes, "Yeah, but I didn't know it." And I said, "Yeah, our Police Department did such a fantastic job. There were no leaks. Nobody knew the extent that this was going on." And I am so proud of our entire Police Department and how they work together on this. And nobody got hurt. Nobody got hurt. It just went click, click, click.
Yeah, Sheriff Brown mentioned that at the press conference. It's pretty amazing when you can do 12-location warrants going after people that are very dangerous, no use as a force. I was hoping to get 10 or 12 of the suspects, got all 15, and then the 16th over at ICE. Worked out very good for us. Our detectives did a truly remarkable job.
And you found him in Arvin, right?
Somewhere out in Arvin. FBI tracked him down using something out there with his phone, but yeah, we tracked him down.
Thank you very much. And please extend our thanks to all the policemen.
And Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. O'Rourke.[1632.15][1632.15](Applause).
I just wanted to chime in, because we sit up here on the dais, and we understand that we take the flak and responsibility, and we certainly do. But we had individuals come here and ask for the chief's resignation, or that we should fire them, or we should be fired, or those kinds of things. And it's rather disheartening when you know the men and women of the police force, the FBI, and everybody else are working extremely hard on this issue. And other than coming down and punching someone in a Trump kind of way, it's... But subsequently, a few have come forward to say, "I'm sorry, I was wrong in what I said about you guys," and that, and the chief and his group have done a phenomenal job. And I'll tell you what, everybody here was as concerned, and is as concerned, as anybody else in this community. Thank you.
We have one community action that a group of community people that has, we've come together, has evolved since then. And our next meeting, and I'll say it now, will be Wednesday, March 23rd, at 6:30 to 8:30 at the Forest Square Church. So I'm telling anyone out there that's interested in attending, because we need to keep, we need to continue to come together as a community so that our children are safe in this community, and work together. Because when crimes are committed and we don't report them, then this is what we have in our community, and we have to all be responsible, because we're all in this together. So thank you again very much, Chief Martin. The next item on our agenda this evening is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the agenda. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction may be given to staff, however, state law does not allow action to be taken by the City Council on matters not on the printed agenda this evening. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form. And we have three requests to speak.
Three requests, three requests to speak, okay? And they'll be given three minutes apiece, and that's it. People have, I don't say they're criticizing me, but they wanted to say, "Alice, give them three minutes, and that's it. You said that at the beginning, and you didn't mean it." So...
Does the floor drop out?
No, we have a dropout there by the floor, and I have a button here, and they just go down to the basement. Okay, Setchel, is it Hogan? Oh. Is that Hagan or Hogan?
Hogan.
Hogan, thank you, Mr. Hogan. And I will give you three minutes.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Satchel J. Hogan. I am 16 years old. I am a sophomore at Santa Maria High School. And I come before you today to express my opinion on the Eno's House development, specifically the house itself. I have always admired the Eno's House, the farmhouse perched upon its hill overlooking the changing world around it. When I caught wind that there was a, that there was interest in saving that house, I knew I had to participate to preserve that house for my generation. Not everywhere, I understand that not due to the cost of moving it and closing, it's being moved down college, correct? The plan. I understand that not everybody is willing to pull $20 out of their pocket right here, right now, to support it. I am. I have $20 in my wallet, and I am ready, right here, right now, to help support the move of the Eno's House, to preserve for my generation, so that unlike the downtown, all the historic buildings were torn down, and future generations were unable to enjoy it. With the Eno's House, we have a piece of history that is able to be saved, and there's interest to save it. So I am expressing my opinion on the moving of the house, and I support it fully. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hogan, and thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate it. I've got your address. I don't have your phone number, but we'll be contacting you. How's that?
I'll meet you outside for $20.
Jesus, and then Olga.
Hello, my name is Olga, and I am the North County Organizer with CAUS. We are glad that the city declared today as Ag Day, and appreciate your effort to support the work of those individuals with the Santa Maria Valley agricultural industry. Agriculture is a vital part of our local economy, and it is important to recognize the role that farmworkers play to make it all possible. Farmers do, farmworkers do one of the hardest jobs out there. They work long hours and are exposed to the elements. This past summer, CAUS collected over 300 surveys from farmworkers here in Santa Maria and Guadalupe, and published a report. We found an alarming trend around wage theft, extreme overwork, health and safety issues, and generally, a culture of fear. In honor of the Ag Day, we asked the city council to do all they can to make sure farmworkers are secure in the agriculture economy, and respected and valued. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hola, mi nombre es Jesús. Soy un trabajador del campo en la fresa. He vivido en Santa Maria por años. Me alegro de que la ciudad esté, está declarando hoy día Ag. Es importante reconocer a los trabajadores agrícolas. Trabajamos largas horas en condiciones a veces peligrosas del trabajo. Trabajamos turnos de 10 horas o más. Piscamos las frutas y verduras que terminan en sus mesas, y merecemos trabajar con dignidad y respeto. Gracias por reconocer nuestra contribución.
Hola, mi nombre es Matías Hernández. Este soy un trabajador del campo.
Okay, did you fill out, tienes un papel así? He needs to fill out a slip. Puedes hablar si quieres.
Ah, disculpen, por favor. Ten el lugar. Mi nombre es Matías, como dije, soy un trabajador del campo. Este, y pues yo sé que es muy duro trabajar en el campo, y se me hace muy injusto que las personas este, estemos, nos pagan overtime después de las 10 horas. Eso es algo importante para mí, y para todas las personas que trabajan en el campo. Gracias.
Gracias, señor. That concludes a public comment. Mr. Hayden, do you have any comments you wish to make?
Thank you, Mayor Patino. Members of the city council, Mr. Hogan that spoke this evening regarding the Eno's Ranches House. We are in discussions with the developer right now about the fate of the house. We're also in discussions with the Historical Society as well, too, regarding that as being a landmark. So we are engaging them in discussions right now. So it is on our radar. Also, before we move on, I want to turn it over to our utilities director, Mr. Springer. He has an update for the viewing public on our water conservation methods so far.
Mr. Springer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, city council members. I will briefly go over our update for the month of February. As you can see on the super complicated chart, that the good news is, is that the city of Santa Maria and the community did meet its cumulative conservation goal required by the state of California up through February. That's indicated by the black dot that's just above the yellow line. You will note that the blue marker is significantly less than the red marker right below it, indicating that we did not get the average conservation that we're looking for, but the state is looking at the cumulative overall. So based on the original requirements established by the state, the city did achieve its required goal of 16%. The state has expanded those goals, and they will continue now from March through October of this year, as required by executive order of the governor. So the next slide shows the water conservation drop. Still smiling. We did, it's, the blue line is above the line for February, even though we, like I said, only saved 6% in February. I will mention a couple of things. It was a very hot, dry February. And we are comparing this February not to an average, but what we had in 2013, where we had cooler rainy weather. So that did hinder our ability month on month, although overall, we met our goal. And as, just a last egghead argument about that, this is a leap year, so we had one more day in February. While that doesn't sound like much, one out of 28 days is about 3.5%. So that would affect our conservation number by dropping it another 3.5%. So the last thing I'll point out is that while it's still El Niño, they've gotten significant rains up north, which is good news for our state water allocation. Here in the Santa Maria Valley, our rainfall average is still only 80% of normal up to this year for an average year. We're at 8.42 inches. And that was as of yesterday morning. Once again, Kachuma is well below capacity. It's still only about 14.9, 15%. And this includes those significant rains we saw last Friday and over the weekend. So we're still encouraging people to continue to conserve water, and just remind people as rain is in the forecast to make sure to turn those sprinklers off. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Boyson.
Mr. Springer, have we received any indication from the state that they are actually going to increase our allocation for state water this year?
It was adjusted up a couple of weeks ago. I've been watching the forecast and the inflows into Oroville and Chasta. Based on the five continuous days of rain they got up there, I would suspect that the allocation will actually increase, but we've gotten no...
What's our current allocation? What's the current official? I'm sorry?
30.
30, great.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Springer? Okay. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for city council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on request of council members.
Okay. Anyone have something they need to pull or discuss?
Wow.
Really? Oh.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'll break the tie. Item 3E, I just want to make a comment on that. It's the second reading for the specific plan. I just want you to note, on your dais tonight, you have a little packet that just shows some technical cleanups that we're going to be including in the final printing of the specific plan. Nothing technical or earth-shattering, but we just wanted full disclosure, let you know that we had made a couple changes. It shouldn't affect the voting on the second, the reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. O'Fallon.
With that, Madam Mayor, I'll move for approval of the consent calendar in its entirety.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion is made to approve this consent calendar, and it's been seconded. Any further discussion? If none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Boyson.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Aye.
And Mayor Patino.
Aye. Wow. Did you put the wow in the minutes on this one? I don't think this has happened in a long time. The next order of business is a presentation. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will receive a presentation from city staff and the chair of the Measure U 2012 Citizens Oversight Committee on the Measure U 2012 Annual Report for the period ending June 30, 2015, and receive and file the Measure U 2012 Citizens Oversight Committee 2014-15 Annual Report.
The presentation is to be made by city manager and the Measure U Oversight Committee Chairman, Mr. Hayden.
Thank you, Mayor Patino. Members of the city council, back on June 5, 2012, the voters in the city of Santa Maria adopted a quarter cent sales and transaction use tax, otherwise known as Measure U 2012. The tax went into place in October, and in September, the city council actually took action to establish a Measure U Oversight Committee. The committee consists of five residents. The chair is Mr. Trent Benedetti. The vice chair is Mr. Jack Owen. Mr. John Peters has been appointed to the committee, and so has Dona Roundolph. We do have one vacancy on the Oversight Committee. And if anybody is interested in applying for the Oversight Committee, I would encourage them to contact our city clerk's office. The committee is charged with ensuring oversight of the revenues generated by and the expenses made in relation to Measure U are done consistent with the city council's direction and the intent of the proceeds. Back in 2012-13, that was the first year that we had the Measure U revenues coming in, the city council set out on a expenditure plan that consisted of a number of primarily public safety-related items. They charged the costs associated with Fire Station Number Five, the operational costs, along with the personnel costs to Measure U. Also, Measure U funded seven police officer positions, five sergeant positions, a fire battalion chief, a crime analyst, public safety dispatcher, a senior park services officer, otherwise known as a city ranger, and also a co-compliance officer. All public safety-related personnel. They also spent some money on increased staffing in the library to increase the library hours, along with the PAL program, and then also the graffiti abatement. Moving forward, the following year, in 2013-14, in addition to the aforementioned expenditure plan that I just mentioned, the city council also authorized Measure U proceeds to go for the loan to repair the Santa Maria levee, an additional police commander, and then also the audit services that enables us to provide the Oversight Committee with the financial data to make their determination as to whether the expenditures made were in compliance with council direction. Last year, and that is the purpose of tonight's meeting, and also the annual report, is in addition to the 2012-13-13-14 plan, the city council also did some more adjustments. And that was, they took a 19-hour-a-week position that dealt with disaster preparedness, and they made it a 32-hour position. They also upgraded the battalion chief position to that of a deputy fire chief. And then lastly, they provided roughly $18,000 in appropriations to cover the increased utility expenses of the library, since we opened the library from 46 hours a week to 56 hours a week. They also set aside some money for capital outlays, primarily in the two public safety departments. $339,000 for the self-contained breathing apparatus, and then also a little bit over $100,000 to purchase the Bearcat. In totality, for last fiscal year, 14-15, we spent $4.2 million, almost $4.3 million in Measure U proceeds, the vast majority of which, over 91%, was spent in public safety departments, 47% in the fire, 44% of police, and the remaining 9% spent in compliance with council direction, in the library, co-compliance, recreation parks, and the administrative services, the loan to the levee. As far as an overview of revenues and expenditures, we actually received about $300,000 more in revenues than what we had anticipated, and we actually spent about $200,000 less than what we had appropriated. So our revenues over expenditures, we actually exceeded our expenditure plan, and we spent $41,000 more than what we received in. That was okay, because we had a beginning fund balance of 3/4 of a million dollars, and that reduced it down to a little bit over $700,000. You will see that Measure U, that's in purple, is part of the general fund. It's a subset of the general fund. And because of the recession, our general fund operating revenues during the recession dipped down tremendously. You know, we lost roughly $10 million in ongoing revenues within four years. And while it picked up a little bit, we finally have exceeded what we used to be, and that is primarily at the expense of Measure U. So that concludes my staff report. I'm available for any questions. Otherwise, I'd like to turn the rest of the presentation over to the chairman of the Measure U Committee, Mr. Benedetti. I really don't see Mr. Benedetti in the audience, but I do believe that the vice chair, Mr. Owen, is in the audience. I saw him come in earlier.
Good evening, Mr. Owen.
Yes. Is Mr. Benedetti going to use tax season as an excuse?
Yes, it's tax season, and Mr. Benedetti is extremely busy. I don't have a script and a report to put together, but the committee did meet twice. We did find that the expenditures were in accordance with Measure U 2012 and the council direction.
Thank you. Thanks, Jack.
We love reports like that, you know that. So thank you so much.
This item is a receipt-and-file item, by the way.
And, Mr. Hayden, we, just to make it clear, we will be going over the budget for the 16-17 Measure U during our normal budget cycle coming to...
Yes, Councilmember Boyson, as part of the budget cycle, which will be coming up this June, we will be going over the expenditure plan for 16-17. Yes.
Thank you. And is there any specific reason that we exceeded revenues by the $300,000? Was there anything specific on that?
I think it was a pickup of the economy.
Okay.
Yes, pickup of the economy, so.
Okay. I know in previous years, we had a timing difference that made a difference, but this was just a normal increase in sales tax.
We didn't get the...
No. No.
This year, okay. So, thank you.
And Measure U concludes in 20...
December 31, 2021.
Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak, or written communications?
No, we do not.
Okay. I'd like to bring this back to the council for any further discussion. If not, the report can be filed. So the council has received the report, and it will be filed with a deputy city clerk. I'd like to thank Mr. Benedetti in abstention, and as well as the rest of the Oversight Committee, and thank you so much for going through that. I don't think people realize how important it is to have the Oversight Committee that makes sure that we're doing what we said we would do with Measure U money. And again, I say thank you to the people in Santa Maria for passing Measure U. And I know Chief Martin says thank you, because that makes his job a lot easier. In fact, one of the commanders said during that Operation Matador, if we hadn't had our police station, we would be renting out buildings and everything else that we needed to accomplish that. Okay, let's move on to appointments. Okay, let's move on to appointments to boards and commission.
The City Council will consider making appointments to the Central Coast Commission Area Agency on Aging and the Recreation and Parks Commission.
Okay. Do we have any requests to speak at this time?
We do not, so I will go ahead with my...
Go ahead.
...my report. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, the request before you tonight is to make one appointment to each of the commissions just mentioned. I will present the commissions one at a time for consideration of the appointments and the Council's ratification. The Central Coast Commission Area Agency on Aging has one vacancy to fill an unexpired term ending in January 2017, and staff received one application for Council's consideration from Lindsay Francis. The appointment is to be made by Mayor Patino with ratification by the City Council.
Is Mr. Francis here this evening?
She's not.
Oh, she, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, then I will move to appoint, so Lindsay Francis to the Central Coast Commission. Do I have a second? It's been moved in second. Any discussion from the Council? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Patino.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Aye.
And the next commission is the Recreation and Parks Commission. There is one vacancy on the Recreation and Parks Commission. Two applications have been received from Rob Litzinger and Rick Martin. A nomination is to be made by Councilmember Boyson to fill an unexpired term ending in January 2019. Appointments will be made by the mayor with ratification by the City Council.
Okay, Mr. Boyson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'm very proud to nominate Pastor of the Church for Life, Pastor Rob Litzinger.
And I know he's here. Would you like to stand, Mr. Litzinger, so everyone can see? Thank you. I'll make the second. Any council discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson.
Aye.
Mayor Patino.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield. And Councilmember Zuniga.
The next order of business is a pub...
Perhaps if Mr. Litzinger, Pastor Litzinger, wanted to say a few words?
Well, I'd first like to thank you for letting me serve on the Block Grants Advisory Commission for the last 10 years, and I've met so many heroes serving there. I do know there's a couple vacancies, so if anybody's interested, I had a wonderful time serving with the crew there, and I know Celesta already left, but she was such a great staff to work with. We really had a great time in our meetings. And so I met, working with over 50 nonprofits, so many heroes there. And from what I hear from the Wreckin' Parks area, working with our park rangers, and so many staff and volunteers, I'm looking forward to meeting a lot of new heroes in this segment of our city. So, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Litzinger. The next order of business is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider recommendations of the Planning Commission to approve a downtown permit for 361 Town Center West to reuse an existing 14,600-square-foot office building for medical use on a 0.2-acre site in the Town Center District of the Downtown Specific Plan.
The staff report is to be made by Community Development Director, Mr. Opel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Just like to give you a few slides this evening as we discuss this project. This is one of the first ones coming through now, under the new Downtown Specific Plan as you amended it last fall. The project site is in Town Center West. You can see on the map there with the yellow line. It's adjacent to the Methodist Church, and just to the west of that is the Rite Aid Building, and then to the north is Fallas. The reason we're here this evening is because this project is on a major corridor, and it's also greater than 10,000 square feet. And your Council decided that, under those circumstances, that you should have the final action on projects of this nature. Here's the shot of the building from over on the Rite Aid parking lot. It was a, it's a two-story bank building that ended up vacating last year, and we now have an opportunity to move a group of medical doctors into this, consolidating their facilities throughout the city, in addition to having their billing center and a small laboratory included in this facility. Here's just a schematic of the building itself and the parking, which is adjacent to it. This is still part of the city parking lot, but the way it's designed here with the landscaping and all, it gives it kind of a feeling that this is parking for just the building here, but they can park really anywhere on the site. The building is 14,600 square feet. They plan on using most of that, and some of the areas that they aren't using, they might end up leasing out to other doctors. But we're very excited to see them moving downtown. That's one of the major issues that we are looking at in the downtown plan of trying to increase the number of people down here, so that we could have better uses of the downtown area. And so our recommendation is to adopt Resolution 2016-26 that would approve the downtown permit, DT 216-0004, for medical offices at 361 Town Center West. I'm available for questions, and I know the applicants here to make the presentation as well.
Thank you, Mr. Opel. And would the applicant like to make any comments at this time?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, City Councilors and honored guests, and ladies and gentlemen. I'm Tom Shaw. I'm addressing you as one of the doctors of Santa Maria Gastroenterology, the group that just acquired the bank building. It'd been sitting idle for about two years. As the pre-documents had actually relocated in another part of town, we're currently requesting that you rezone to allow for medical services for this building. As gastroenterologists, we provide specialized care of diseases of the stomach, intestines, associated organs, such as the liver, bile duct, pancreas, and esophagus. Not only do we care for people of this town, but we also get patient referrals from as far away as Bradley Lockwood in King City to the north, and even Santa Barbara and Carpenteria to the south. Members of our group are collaborating with Marion Medical Center and Mission Hope Cancer Center to help with colon cancer awareness in this community. We have guided, we have provided public seminars, and also monthly free colon cancer screening and colonoscopy procedures for medically indigent. Our group is also helping with the education of the future generation of doctors. We're training at the Marion Hospital Family Practice Residency Program. Although we are one group, currently, we're scattered all over town, and it's sometimes hard for our patients to find us. Additionally, in this difficult medical environment of lowered reimbursement, increased government regulation, which raises our overhead costs, we are clearly struggling. The Chinese word for crisis is composed of two characters. One character means danger, the other is opportunity. In this medical environment, we are definitely cognizant of the dangers, but we are also seeing the opportunities. The opportunity to consolidate five doctors' offices under one roof, the opportunity to benefit from the economies of scale, the opportunity to be more efficient and provide more services to the community, and the opportunity to provide our patients and people of this community the best quality gastroenterology services in the entire Central Coast, encompassing the counties of Santa Barbara, Monterey, San Luis Obispo, and Ventura. What is so exciting is that our aspirations dovetail so well with the city of Santa Maria's efforts to revitalize the downtown corridor. Our new office will be centrally located with good visibility, and our patients will have access to public transportation. We're planning to add some sparkle to the building, painting the exterior, putting in new landscaping, revamping the appearance of the front doors. The entire first floor of the building will be remodeled to physician offices and patient exam rooms. At the same point, a call center, billing office, and staff break room will be placed in the basement, and possibly a lab. The second-story format will remain pretty much the same with additional paint and carpeting, and we hope to eventually expand into this area, but we'd like to retain the option of being able to rent out the space if need be. Again, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, as well as the public, for giving me this opportunity to speak, and specifically want to thank Larry and Neta from the Planning Commission for helping to guide us through this process.
Thank you, Dr. Shaw. Madam Clerk, do you have any written correspondence?
No, we do not.
Okay, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do you have any requests to speak in favor or in opposition?
And we have no requests to speak.
Okay, then I'll close the public hearing and bring this back to the Council for discussion or a motion.
Okay.
Well, if there's no discussion, I'll make a motion.
Sounds good.
I'll move for the adoption of Resolution Number 2016-26, approving the downtown permit, DT 2016-004, for a medical office at 361 Town Center West.
Second. I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2016-26, and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Zuniga.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson.
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Shaw. Good luck. And now we have another public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider recommendations of the Planning Commission to approve a downtown permit for 504 South Broadway to convert an existing building into 36 residential studio units and 11 commercial units on a 0.7-acre site in the Gateway District of the Downtown Specific Plan.
Staff report is to be made by Community Development Director, Mr. Opel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. Again, we have another downtown project for you. This one is located between the library and Sula Restaurant on the east side of Broadway. And you can see it in the view there. Again, the downtown matrix, same reasons for the last one being seen. This one is here. It's on the major corridor, being South Broadway, and also it's larger than 10,000 square feet. The total is 16,700 square feet for the total building. The building was originally constructed as a motel and was used for many years as that, and then over the years, it's kind of had different uses. And currently, there are a number of small businesses, nail shop, a couple lawyers' offices, bookkeepers. I think there's a drug rehab center in there, a number of different things. It's just being used for a lot of uses. And so, just recently, Mr. Mohatra purchased the property and came to us, excited about using the downtown plan and seeing what he could do to make this property better. The plan at this point is to leave 11 units as the commercial units, and then convert back what had been motel rooms to small apartment efficiency units. And that was the first floor here, and then the second floor, which was mainly the efficiency units. The front end of the building is going to get a complete facelift. I was talking to the owner this afternoon, and he was going over the details of this. And we've got water features and all kinds of nice work that's going to be done on this. So it's really going to make the property look a lot better than it has in the past. And then here's just a picture of the neighboring property to the south, where during the Planning Commission meeting, we had a number of comments from the owners, which we'll be discussing this evening during my presentation. We do have a recommendation for approving this project, following the Planning Commission's approval of it. What I want to explain before going to that is that when the project was before the Planning Commission, the concerns with the owners of the south was that with their event center, along with the restaurant and all, they felt that it would be inappropriate to have residential units right adjacent to them, and that could see there being a conflict there of the residents complaining about either noise or smell or something. And that was one of those things that the owner was really concerned about and wanted to make sure he took care of those issues. And so, in meeting with him today and after going through the Planning Commission, we've now put together a revised set of conditions, which you have at your desk there, called, for item number seven, called the Santa Maria City Downtown Permit. Taking into consideration the concerns that have been raised by the owners of the building to the south, we've come up with a number of conditions that the owner is willing to do, and I just want to review those with you this evening. First condition, number four, dealing with the noise. The owner has, even though he doesn't prefer doing this, he said he'll do this if this is required of the City Council. But there are 10 units on the second floor that face the south, basically the restaurant, that are proposed to be residential units. And he has said that he would allow those to be the commercial units and trade those 10 out to have commercial down on the first floor, or residential down on the first floor. The drawback from a business plan is that, think about yourself, if you're a bookkeeper and you've got a small little business, if you are upstairs and on the backside, you don't get much traffic or visibility as you would for those that are downstairs where all the parking is. So that's the one drawback to this fix, but it's still something that he'd be willing to do if the majority of the council wants to go that way. One of the other issues we've had in town lately is with the H2A housing and them coming in and converting motel units similar to these into farmer-per-housing. So in condition number five, the owner has agreed that residential leases shall be signed for one year when possible. Added "when possible" because there are some situations where he may have some Hancock students or someone else that might be coming in for part of a year and then going home and not wanting to have a full-year lease. And so, most of the properties are normally a month-to-month, but for those that really want to live downtown and stuff, he's more than willing to have one-year leases with those people. Again, the condition number six now, the owner has agreed that the project will not be used for H2A housing. So that makes it pretty clear. Condition number 12, just to indicate here that if any of the office spaces or where the office spaces are converted to residential units, that would trigger the need for the AB 1600 fees to apply. And so we want to make that clear in the conditions. And then on condition number 23, we just want to make sure that the easement is recorded before the first occupancy of the remodeled units. And so that pretty much covers the revised conditions, which I think addressed the issues of the neighbors. And then there was one other thing, talking about the new residents coming in there, letting them know that they have the facility next to them. Another handout for you, also number seven, disclosure statement regarding neighborhood noise and parking for 504 South Broadway. This was just submitted to his attorney this past week, and so it hasn't been finalized yet, but it gives you an idea of what he is asking the potential tenants to sign when they come there. So it gives full disclosure that they are adjacent to a facility that could be loud, and also about the parking requirements for them, that they might be required to use a portion of the public library, in particular the commercial people during the day. So I believe that's all I have. The owner is here to make a presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I do.
Mr. Zuniga?
No, Jack.
Okay, Mr. Boyson.
I was just going to ask, is the disclosure statement requirement, is that in the conditions somewhere?
No, it's not.
Are we going to include that in?
If you want to add it, I'll add a condition number 28.
Okay. That would be my preference, I think.
Okay. Mr. Zuniga?
Mr. Opel, does staff have an opinion about the flow of the project by splitting up the residential and business up, down, half and half?
Our preference would have been to leave the residential upstairs and the commercial downstairs, just because you've got a lot of activity going on during the day, which could just be the commercial downstairs, not having to bother the people upstairs at all, because that would all be residential. But given the concerns that were raised by the owners, we did come up with the option of trying to trade some of that out, the 10 units that are on the top floor. So it's really up to how your council wants to handle it, which one, which issue you think is more... important to address.
Thank you. Kate, do you have a question? Ms. Waterfield?
Yes, did you take into consideration the trash that might be accumulated with so many residents living upstairs? Is there any kind of clause that speaks to no overhanging of clothes or trashcans out in the little breezeway and those type of things, so it doesn't get cluttered?
There's two full-size trash containers there. I know when I lived in an apartment years ago, we had one container for that many apartments, and we still did find. So, I don't think that's going to be an issue.
I'm not talking about the big trash containers. I'm talking about the breezeways going into each apartment upstairs, to make sure there isn't a lot of clutter, to keep that safe and completely clear.
Why don't you discuss that with the applicant, or the owner, when he comes up and see if he has some ideas?
Okay, but you guys didn't think of that at all?
No, no.
Okay.
Okay, would the applicant like to make any comments at this time? Thank you.
I probably, I neglected to disclose that I met with the applicant and Mr. Lopez.
Okay.
Yes.
And I also met with the applicant. Any other disclosures?
I have met with both applicant, as well as Mr. Lopez.
And I met with both as well.
And I met with the Lopez brothers.
Okay.
One Lopez.
So, Madam Mayor and members of the council, thank you for giving me this opportunity to come and address some of these concerns. One of the questions raised was, is the lease disclosure as part of the conditions? It is. It's condition number five. So, that's part of the conditions of the downtown permit. The lease disclosure that you were just reviewing, it's definitely part of the conditions. Okay? So, you know, just a few general comments. I mean, one is, you know, businesses and residential communities, apartments have coexisted in downtown areas, you know, across the United States. So, you know, one of the things I want to sort of emphasize is, while this may seem new for this part of town, for perhaps the city of Santa Maria, I'm really not trying to do anything new here, right? And secondly, you know, it falls right in line with the whole vision of the adoption of the downtown specific plan, where the city wants to encourage living downtown and wants businesses, as well as residential communities, to sort of coexist, right? In terms of, you know, the two major issues that have been brought up, and really, there is only, you know, one set of individuals that are objecting to this, which are my neighbors to the south, and that's really the issue around noise, parking, and so on. And I think, having sort of gone out of my way to sort of agree to several conditions regarding triple pane windows, insulating the walls, and making sure that all the residents on that side will be sort of immune to any noises coming out of the restaurant and the club. And this last discussion around offering up the point that, look, any units that are facing the Sula Mediterranean Restaurant, you know, I'd be happy to keep those commercial, right? And then, anything that is below that was originally meant to be commercial, be converted to residential units. And then, in terms of parking, other than the lease disclosure, you know, we're definitely going to make sure that, you know, there's ample parking available. I mean, per the code that the city, under the city code, I'm required to have 20 spaces. I actually have 40 spaces for parking. I'm making a full disclosure to all tenants regarding parking available in the adjacent parking structure in the Santa Maria Public Library. Councilmember Waterfield brought up the point about breezeways. There is a clause in the lease that I give to my tenants, that there is absolutely nothing allowed on those breezeways. You can't store a bike, you can't put a chair out there, you can't hang any clothes. So, those have always to be kept free, simply for walking purposes, right? Actually, that's really all I have to really offer. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions or concerns that council members might have as they've reviewed the document itself.
Any questions of Mr. Mohatra from the council?
I guess I'm going to tag team with Councilmember Waterfield on there. I think that, you know, the reduction of clutter and the breezeways and that sort of thing is very, very important.
Right.
And while, of course, you're going to own this for the rest of your life, and your children are then going to own it after that.
Right.
But in the event that this property were to change hands, would you mind a condition be placed that's similar to the wording of your lease?
I would not, Councilmember Boyson. I will say this, that these leases are fairly airtight, and, you know, those tenants have to sign off on it. And it's really a condition for, it's a violation of the lease if they were to, you know, continue to clutter or, you know, after repeated warnings, not remove that clutter from these breezeways. But if the city feels more comfortable adding a condition, I'm happy to do that. I don't think that's a, it's a huge issue.
And I think that our condition would be something to the effect that your lease shall reflect the anti-clutter and that sort of thing, because this is such an important visual.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Aspect of our downtown. Thank you, Councilmember Waterfield.
Ms. Waterfield?
I have another concern. I know you can't discriminate to anybody in regards to who rents up on top. So, should seniors, a senior couple would like to rent, do you have elevators?
I do not. And we've discussed this ad nauseam with the city itself. One of the things was, since this is an existing structure, it has four stairwells. It was built prior to 1991. And based on the code, I'm not required to have elevators. And that's where we kind of came out. And, you know, elevators by themselves, Ms. Waterfield, is a huge expense. It certainly affects the economics of the project. And, but the short answer is, no, I don't.
So, you couldn't rent to handicap as well, then, in regard to this piece of property?
Well, if we do what we're suggesting here, which is have some units below that are residential and keep the 10 commercial that are facing Sula, I'll have ample units down below that are handicap access. The other way to sort of get around it, if we were to leave, if we were to live with the original plan, is that you need at least 5% of your total residential units on the first floor that are allowable for handicap access, which essentially would, in this case, would mean a unit and a half, right? So, I could also go that direction, assuming we stay with the original plan.
Okay, and my third concern is the rodeo. Have you thought about the rodeo when they close the streets off? How will your residents go in and out? Is there another backway? Do they just do the reverse? And how do they go in and out?
I don't have.
They close on Broadway for a couple of parades during the day, so that's something that you need to consider with the city and...
Right. Well, I will say this, on the last parade, I've had some of my commercial tenants wanting to come and watch the parade from this building. So, rather than sort of go in and out at the time, they wanted to actually, you know, all assemble there and watch the parade. But the short answer is, I don't have another egress that allows people to, you know, get out, because I am sort of landlocked between the library and my neighbor to the south, and then my neighbor towards McLennan.
Because you will have more vehicles under there, and so, just for emergency reasons as well.
True.
That needs to be considered.
Right.
Oh, Ms. Sunnega?
Yes, I had two questions. One was the elevator question.
Sure.
And then, my other question was just an inquiry about, do you have an opinion or a thought about what the possible impact might be to you trying to rent upstairs to businesses, given that it's on the south side and it's not going to be viewable, kind of like from the street with people pulling in, and it's now separate from where all your commercial spaces?
Well, Ms. Sunnega, we have tenants today on that side. In addition to two AA groups that sort of meet four times a day, I have two other commercial tenants sort of facing the Sula Restaurant. It makes it less desirable, but it's not something that can't be done, or, you know, that I won't be able to rent it, right? But it certainly will make it less desirable for certain individuals. Now, if it is a one-man attorney shop, I doubt that they would care, because what they're really looking for is proximity to the courthouse, and they can literally walk over to the courthouse from that building. If it's a bookkeeper or any kind of other benign business that doesn't require, you know, Broadway-facing frontage to advertise their business, I think those businesses would be perfect for that location.
Certainly, we don't know how the vote is going to go tonight, but I know in the past, this council has had lots of discussions about, you know, being business-friendly and not, you know, property owners' rights and those kinds of things. So, it feels a little odd for us to be having this before us. And I'm thinking in terms of, for me, for Ms. Waterfield, Councilmember Waterfield's comment, all of us in Santa Maria, when the rodeo's around, has to change our driving practices and decide where we're going to go and what time. So, somehow, we just manage that around the rodeo and the Christmas parade. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Waterfield?
I do have one more question. Ms. Sunnega brought up property rights. Have you discussed with the owners of Sula how this will work out to where both of you can be good neighbors?
I have not had the opportunity to speak with them or meet with them, Ms. Waterfield.
Oh, you haven't?
Frankly, I take full responsibility for that. I didn't think that this was such a big issue, because I thought that I was going out of my way to address the issues with respect to noise and parking. And so, I did not. And...
Did the Planning Commission or city staff ask you to speak with the owners of Sula?
I believe, I believe Ms. Pratt did suggest that I, at some point, do go and speak with the owners, yes.
Because it is a concern. They do have an entertainment facility right next door, and it may cause for some concern. I wish you would have spoken to them. That's disheartening to me.
Kate, do you have a question, Mr. Opel?
Yeah, I do. And I guess from the commercial tenants and some of the ones that have, you know, there's a fence and a gate, I know, between Sula and your property. And I know with some of the Al-Anon and whoever that attend those meetings at night, the car parking is not usually over on the library side. And how do your tenants, then, that you're renting to, that are holding these kinds of meetings, I guess, or how are you going to enforce that they don't encroach on the neighbors' parking? Because I understand that's been a problem in the past and...
Well, so, parking, I guess parking enforcement, I certainly cannot enforce parking if somebody chooses willingly to go violate or park anywhere they do in somebody else's property or on a public street, you know, in front of a fire extinguisher, right? I mean, they have the option to tow those cars away, right? Just as I have the option to tow people that are illegally parked on my property, right? Certainly, besides the lease disclosure, besides being a condition in the lease and being told that, look, you can't park in neighboring properties, and you can only park either on this property or the Santa Maria public parking structure, I have no way of enforcing some individual's actions, right, with respect to parking. I really don't. I don't think anybody else in the city does.
I guess going from there, since, I guess, the fence and the gate is on your property ...
Right.
Rather than the neighbors to the south, other than shutting that entire section down to non-traffic would certainly go a long way. And is that a possibility?
And that is the intent. I do not intend to give the key to that. In fact, this similar discussion came up in the Planning Commission session. And it was Ms. Pratt that brought it up. And I said, look, that is a gate today for people to access. In fact, none of those people actually have keys, other than one or two individuals. And I said, look, that key belongs to me. And if I need to shut that gate down and just stop people from going in and out of that gate, you know, that's on me. And that's what I intend to do. I don't intend to share that key with any of my tenants.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Boyson?
Is there a purpose for the gate?
It's been there, Mr. Boyson, forever. I don't know why they had it to begin with. Perhaps it's an emergency gate, but it really serves me no purpose. I have never gone in and out of that gate, never used it.
And, I mean, Mr. Opel, can we talk maybe to the fire department and see if there is a requirement that we have that gate for emergency?
We could certainly ask them, and if there's no reason for it anymore.
Maybe eliminate the gate?
That's a possibility. I don't know if there's anything prescriptive easements or anything because of the length of time that people have gone through there. I just don't know what the legal aspect is.
But if the owner of the property is willing to, you know, forego whatever easement, you know, may exist, and I'm certain that the neighbors to the south would be more than happy to acquiesce on that point, it would seem to be...
Well, we'll check with the fire department, see if there's any reason to leave it open. And if there isn't, then the owner's willing to just shut it down. And we just eliminate it.
Okay.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do you have any written correspondence?
No, we do not.
Okay, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do you have any requests to speak?
We have one unspecified and four opposed.
Four opposed? Okay. I will take Martin Mariscal, followed by Daniel Murphy, followed by Gail Vasius, followed by Tom Lopez, followed by Peter Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Martin Mariscal, a resident of the city of Santa Maria. I'm actually torn on this one. I really am. Because, as you know, I worked really hard to get the downtown specific plan moving forward, and we thought we were going to pass it a while ago. It didn't get passed, but got modified, it got passed. Believed in it so much, I put my own money where my mouth was, you know, and I bought property in the downtown area. So, I am torn about this. I really do appreciate the zeal, however, with which staff has worked on this, because they're really trying to implement it. And to that, I take my hat off to them. There's a couple issues, though, as the property owner next door, and some of my associates are here, and they're going to talk about, I'm sure, the concerns that they have about the ongoing operations. And so, I don't want to address that part. I really do want to address, if this does come to fruition and you're going to approve this, there are some issues that I have that I would hope that you would address or at least ask questions about. And some of them were brought up. First off, you're going to have 36 residential units, but none of them were designated for handicap. What you asked for was, do they have handicap access? But none of them are designated for handicap individuals. And I think that that's actually a travesty, because particularly, if you do allow them to have commercial on the south side, and you relocate some of the residential to the interior, you'll have first floor. So, some of those units could actually be designated as handicap units. And I think that that's an important part. In looking at the layouts, I couldn't really tell, but it looks like there are going to be little kitchenettes put in each of the units. I don't know if they're there now, but it looks like they're going to. Is that right, Larry, that they're going to be? Okay, that's cool. That was a question that I did have. Are the units going to be sprinkled for fire? Because there are now 36 residential units, and if I built anything new on my property, I have all kinds of regulations that I think if this is going to convert to residential, some of those components need to come into play also. I mean, 36 residential units and not sprinkled for fire, that's kind of a concern. There was something about the H2A workers, and I understand about the property up on North Broadway related to that. But as you know, we have an awful lot of individuals who work in the agricultural industry here that are not H2A workers, but they are, in fact, undocumented. Is there anything to address renters in that capacity? I don't know. What is such a negative thing about people that are actually permitted being here versus ones that aren't permitted to be here? Because if there's no restriction on that, then really, this project can rent every single unit to an agricultural worker that, except for having that permit, meets all the requirements of an H2A worker. So, I'm a little bit out of a loss for that. And then, lastly, the gate has always been an issue for us. And I don't even know why the gate is there. I don't know if there is an implied easement after all these years. But if this project is going to be approved, and if, and it sounded to me like the owner is at least amenable, I would prefer to have a wall built between the two properties. Not just a gate, or not a fence, but a wall. Might as well create a true bifurcation between, and delineate between the two properties. And I think that that would also show that the owner is concerned about the type of activity that is taking place on the property to the south, and the fact that they really do want to be good neighbors, not only for the relationship between the two property owners, but for any residents or tenants that they have on their property. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mariscal. Thank you, Mr. Mariscal. Daniel Murphy, followed by Gail Macias.
Dan Murphy, my property is across from Sula. And I didn't make the planning meeting, but I am opposed. I want the city council to really take a close look at this. It's a pretty big deal. I feel like the city council jumped the gun on the Spearmint Rhino, and I am one of the people that have to deal with that. And I'm afraid, hopefully, something like this isn't going to happen with this property. I mean, the H2A worker thing, I understand. What about subsidized housing? If the professional, what's a young professional? That's what's supposed to be running these places? Lawyers, accountants, bankers, things like that? Well, if they aren't there, who's going to take the rentals? Is it going to be subsidized housing? Is it going to be low-income housing? Exactly what it's going to turn into. You know, I'm just hoping it's not going to be something like that. I really hope you take some serious look at this and don't jump to conclusions like happened with the Rhino. That's one of my main concerns. My other concern is the parking. I have some friends that were, they managed the place before, and they said there was only one parking spot per unit. So where are these people going to park if there's more than one vehicle? Are they going to go over to Sula? Are they going to go over to my lot across the street? Is there going to be people going back and forth across Broadway because of parking? It could be a mess. So please take a look at this. And the last thing is, has somebody done their homework? You know, the owner seems like a nice guy, but we looked at what his previous history is with rentals. Just, please don't jump to conclusions. That's what I'm asking for. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, can I ask what business? You didn't mention the business.
Murphy Chiropractic. I've been there since 1989.
Okay, thank you. Gail Macias, followed by Tom Lopez.
Hi. My name's Gail Macias, and I just had to come tonight for this exact reason. We don't need another motel, long-term housing in our downtown district. It's a shame we have it on North Broadway. We certainly don't need it on our Business 101 district. Thirty-six housing units that are, I don't know what the square footage is, but they are glorified motel rooms. And I think that everyone needs to look at this seriously and consider who's going to be living in this. Again, who are the professionals that are going to be living in this small housing unit? I hope that they're not the professionals of Spearmint Rhino. That's a huge concern of mine. And we have a new complex on Boone Street. We don't know how that's going to work out. It also was sold to the public as being young professionals and Hancock students. How can you use those two names? Those two groups of people in the same sentence? I don't know. It really confuses me. Hancock students and young professionals, they're two different groups of people. We're using, and it's being sold to us again, as a group of the public, that these are young professionals. I think we're fooling ourselves. And the parking issue is huge, is huge. I own homes in downtown Pismo, condo complex in downtown Pismo. We have lots of mixed-use housing there. Parking is absolutely atrocious. And if there isn't requirements for where bicycles are going to be parked and locked away, where people are going to maintain their stroller if they happen to have a child, there has to be some sort of space, storage space for each one of those units. In one of our complexes, we add carports and just a parking spot. Each condo is 800 square feet. I mean, they're small. But we have two parking requirements for each place. One is a carport, and one is a covered carport. We ended up having to build pretty good-sized storage units to accommodate the people's personal needs, to not have them out in the patio areas. We have nice, big patios, but everybody can view the patios as they're coming by. And it became an absolute eyesore. All these things need to be addressed. This is 36 units, you know. It's a glorified hotel. And I think we need to look at, you know, again, this is our downtown, and we're trying to create a downtown image. And I don't think this density of units is appropriate. The parking, I'm sorry, I think I heard that they're going to be using city parking or allow sitting parking to be part of the parking that's being established for this. I've never heard of the city allowing a private individual to be using city parking as part of their requirement. So I'm confused with that. Maybe I misunderstood. But my city dollars, I don't appreciate being used for someone else's housing. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Tom Lopez, followed by Peter Lopez.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, Tom Lopez, 201 West Main Street. A while back, the city's attorney's office prepared a single-room occupancy ordinance, and it went to the planning commission. It passed 5-0. Went to the city council, and it was 0-5. It was denied. A few years ago, the efficiency dwelling unit ordinance was passed. And that required properties in the C1 zoning district to take the non-conforming use, which was being used as apartments. They were originally hotels, and now they're being used as apartments. So there was a tool for them to use to allow them to conform to the new efficiency dwelling unit. But that required them to have parking. It required them to have common areas. It required them to have storage. Storage is a big concern. In other words, it had to be a superior project in order for them to use the efficiency dwelling unit standards. This project almost appears to have the watered-down characteristics of the efficiency dwelling units. It doesn't provide all the parking that the efficiency dwelling units have to provide. I didn't see storage on the property. The amenities are 600 feet away at the Maldonado Center or over at the mall. So those are some of the concerns that I have for the downtown specific plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Lopez?
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilwoman, women, staff. You know, a lot has been said here tonight, some of the concerns, and some of the items have been addressed by the applicant. You know, I haven't seen a side elevation on the south side here to the gate area, or even if a wall is required for this project. Even if a wall is placed, and half the time the fence is, the gate is open, half the time the gate is not open. When the gate isn't open, they just come around, they park on the back parking area that belongs to our property. When we go over to kindly remind them that it's private property, that we're conducting business, we get threatened, we get called names, we get all kinds of things said to us. The ordinance right now, as I understand it, even if you post it, you know, private property, no parking, you have to have a vehicle there for a period of an hour before you can actually tow it. So sometimes it's futile for us to even have a communication with them. And if you have a car towed, then, you know, you're the jerk. That's been ongoing now since I've been operating the area. Parking, where are they going to park? If you have businesses that leave a business vehicle there overnight, that's going to be one less parking area. They're not going to go across the library. Most people take the shortest route, and that's, you know, down our parking area. Anything you could do to address the parking issue would go a long way with us. The residents, I'm looking on here that the target's going to be occupancy, two people per unit, you know, no kids, young professionals. I manage property. I can't dictate those terms. Federal law, you know, really, they're the guideline there. If you could do that, God, I'd love the opportunity to implement some on our properties. I just don't know what's going to happen there. No playground for the kids. It's going to make our area more of a playground area. Because you can't dictate no kids there, or you can't dictate professionals. What's a professional? You know, you could put all kinds of ordinances, have the leases signed, that, you know, they're not going to complain when we have loud music or lights or otherwise until 2:00 in the morning. Yet who's really going to police that? The police department goes, oh, yeah, yeah, you have something on your lease. Okay, it's going to be the police department that's going to be called, and we're going to have to deal with the issues, and ultimately it impacts our business. Well, I wish the applicant well on this application. I just think that it would have gone a long way to have met with us and maybe addressed some of these issues beforehand, but here's where we're at. I'd love to see a south wall if anything else, but I know we're going to have the continued parking issues that we, you know, currently have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Mr. Lopez, can I ask a question really quickly?
Sure, go ahead.
I believe that you've, have you rented parking spaces to the city in the past on your property in the back?
Can I address that?
Sure, go ahead.
You know, that property was in use for the city for a period of time. It was a staging area when the library was built. Okay, after that time, for a minimal amount, we leased the back parking area back to the city. But Rick, I think that lease has expired now, right? Okay. What's interesting about the property, Terry, is that people use it as kind of a pass-through, okay? Sometimes, pretty fast. I mean, we've had to come out and tell people, hey, you know, slow it down or what have you when I'm coming in or out. But what's interesting is that the city owns an easement down the middle of the property. Is that right? My understanding that there is an easement that the city owns that traverses east and west down the middle of the property, at such time that that property is developed, the easement will shift to the north side adjacent to the Knights of Columbus. Because my understanding is that the city also owns an easement on the adjoining property, the Knights of Columbus. So combined, they, you know, they will serve as the easement for the access for the library property and the other property that the city presently owns now. So to answer your question there, even if we wanted to block it off, we can't because of the easement.
Yeah, thank you. There is an easement, a permanent easement, behind the property in question to the south of the library. And there's also an easement that goes through the parking lot we've talked about and accesses McClellan Street.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Lopez, I'd be interested in inquiring if, let's say, either before or depending on what happens tonight, if in the future, parking does actually become an issue, and your concerns that the residents aren't really using, you know, the other public parking that's available nearby. Would you be interested in leasing parking spaces to the developer for his tenants?
That's always a possibility. I mean, like I said, I just, in hindsight, I wish that, you know, maybe I would have reached out to him to make this a better project. I mean, I think it could be a great project. I just, these are vital concerns to us. And, you know, when you're threatened or you're cussed out or something, because, you know, you're just trying to protect your own property, right, for your own patrons, makes it a little bit difficult. And, you know, you can't patrol an ordinance.
Right.
He's asking us to patrol that, but, you know, I mean, I'd be out there.
Right, right. Well, and so, you know, I know that back parking, you know, that back parking lot doesn't get used a whole lot. So if that was something that you were amenable to, that might be something that...
During the day, DMV people still use it a lot.
Do they? Yeah.
You know, so, I mean, the Knights of Columbus use it as well. We're trying to be good neighbors, but not at the expense of our own business.
Of course, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to close the public hearing, bring this item back to the council for discussion and/or a motion. So who wants to start the discussion?
First of all, I'd kind of like to hear Mr. Rappel's response to some of the points that have been...
Some of the issues, certainly. Mr. Rappel?
Well, I've got the two conditions, I think, that came out of some of this discussion that we had. And then if there are specific topics you want me to cover, I'd be happy to. First, a new condition, 28. I'm suggesting that the lease agreement shall contain wording that prohibits placement of anything within the breezeways. And condition number 29, if no prescriptive easement or fire safety regulation requires the gate to remain open, then the owner shall permanently seal the gate. So I think that was my takeaway from your discussion. Now, if there are any specifics you want me to discuss, I'd be happy to.
They did ask about, Mr. Mariscal asked whether this building is going to be sprinkled for fire.
I don't believe it is. You know, this is one of those buildings, and the fire chief might be able to have some information for us on that. Are there any specific dates that triggered the need for fire sprinkling? Because I know, like we said, we're exempt from putting in an elevator, but since it's such an old building, I don't know if they require that to be retrofitted. I don't know. Perhaps if we called the owner back up at some point, he might be able to ask that question. He's probably researched it himself.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Could you please come to the podium?
So, members of the council, we did have this research ad nauseam again by the members of the building department. And I do have a documentation, a letter from the building department saying, in the same letter, saying that because it was built prior to 1991, and in consultation with the fire department, no fire sprinklers are required, and no elevators required. And I have that letter. In fact, I'm happy to share that with you, Mr. Rappel, if you'd like.
Mr. Mohalter, what year was that built? Was it late 1960s?
1959 was the year the building was...
1959, okay.
Yes.
Wow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, discussion from the council. Are you done? Okay. Ms. Waterfield?
Okay. I'm concerned with the kitchenettes. What exactly is a kitchenette?
Kitchenette has to contain all the normal functioning things that you would have in your own kitchen.
A range, oven, refrigerator.
In a refrigerator.
So is there any type of firewall in between the apartment walls? If one apartment catches on fire, do they just all go down? Where's the safety component?
Well, it probably was two-by-four construction with drywall on each side. So there is a certain amount of protection you get through the drywall itself. But obviously, you have a hot enough fire, something's going to burn through. Just like, you know, in current construction, you have to have a two-hour firewall between like the garage and the livable space. And so that's like two or three layers of drywall. I know Jack would probably know more than that. But the point is that it's a building that was built to safety standards years ago. But at the time, you know, they're still looking for fire safety. And so there are certain things that they did to try to keep those buildings safe. It's, you know, a lot of people live in old buildings. And so, I mean, we are not seeing the safety issues here as being a reason to turn down a reuse of an existing building in the downtown area.
So 36 kitchenette units is, you don't think there's nothing unsafe about that with an old, old building, 1959 building?
I think it would have been more of an issue if we're looking at lazy days with their non-kitchen areas that they were turning into kitchen areas with their heating elements and things like that that shouldn't have been there. These are going to be built, and they're going to have to be inspected by our department. And so they're going to have to meet safety standards to be able to be able to convert these into living units.
Okay. I think my main concern with this project is that Mr. Mahorter did not have the common courtesy to contact the owners of Sula. Because in my opinion, there's a lot of unsettled issues here that need to be addressed. And I have to agree, even though you did tell me you want to lease to certain people, you can't dictate who you lease to. And the children, where there would be no kind of amenities for them at all. The parking is an issue. The wall, I would definitely agree to a wall to protect an existing business that owns a restaurant and a nightclub, completely on that one. There's just so many issues here that really probably could have been ironed out between you and the owners in regards to this property. And it just, like I said before, it's very disheartening that you didn't go through the recommendations of Mrs. Pratt and reach out to the property owners. Just a lot of issues here. The storage is going to be a huge issue as well. Because even if you're a young college person, you're going to have bikes, you're going to have all sorts of different types of items to need to put in an apartment. And with this being so tiny, there's a need for storage. So I'm just... So I'm just kind of disappointed.
Any comments? Other comments?
Sure.
Mr. Boyson, go ahead.
Well, you know, I certainly appreciate and understand Councilmember Waterfield's concerns on this. I guess I look at this a little bit like, you know, somebody that's buying a house out in an agricultural environment, and then is shocked that people are actually farming around them and they're spraying pesticides and things like this. I think that, one, Mr. Mulhulter is right, that the individuals that will be renting these places will be fully aware of their environs and will know what they're getting into. I certainly would support putting all of the residential units on the north side of the project to give it an additional buffer, as well as the increased insulation and the triple-pane windows and all of these things, and keeping the commercial side strictly on the south side of the building. As far as the parking goes, I know that we have a, it's very, it's specified within our downtown specific plan how much parking is required for a project like this. We, you know, we developed the plan with the idea that this sort of a project would be viable in a downtown environment. As a matter of fact, this project could have been less parking, as I understand it. It could have been only one parking unit per two residences. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Under the downtown plan, as long as it's close enough to the library and that sort of thing. And we specifically designed the downtown specific plan to accommodate these type of things and to create this urban environment and a more high-density urban environment. So I understand the concerns that the Lopez have with their parking on site and that they have had issues in the past and probably will continue to have issues in the future. But I don't think that's an issue that is going to be exacerbated necessarily by this project, especially if we seal off the gate. I like Councilmember Waterfield's idea of a wall along that side. I don't want to make this so expensive that it's not a viable project. I do believe that, you know, this is one of those projects that we just need to get something started within the downtown area. So I would like staff perhaps to explore that possibility. And if it's a wish of my other council members, I would certainly support the wall idea. But overall, I, you know, we talked about property rights. I think Mr. Mulhulter has designed a project that is well within the spirit of the downtown specific plan, well within the legal parameters of the downtown specific plan. And so I would tend to support it, especially with all of the conditions that we have. And we, you know, no one can predict the future, but I think we've put some pretty tight conditions on this that, you know, going forward, we'll be able to enforce if it does get out of hand.
Mayor?
Ms. Zuniga.
So, you know, I think that, you know, we had the Enos Rancho's property before us last council meeting. I think these are the kinds of conversations that we're going to have moving forward as we move forward, putting the vision of the downtown specific plan in. It is like having a new neighbor move in that you don't know. And, you know, these kinds of concerns are going to be butting up against each other. But we have committed, I believe, to a downtown specific plan. I believe this project fits into the downtown specific plan. When I met with Mr. Lopez, he brought up three primary concerns to me, which were parking, noise, and then we talked about the transient nature of, you know, possible residents, given his experience in, you know, renting properties. But I agree with Mr. Boyson. I think that either we're going to commit to the downtown specific plan, make, you know, make as much accommodations regarding concerns that we can without actually tying the hands of developers completely, and just be bold. And, you know, it's difficult for me because, you know, I have so much respect for Mr. Lopez, and, you know, I feel like you're my friend. And so it's difficult for me to like, you know, be considering something that you're not happy with, so I just want to put that out there. But I think that the developer has done a lot to mitigate what those concerns are. And I think that he's gone over and above. I mean, if we talk about the parking issue, he's only required to have 18 spaces and he has 40. So, you know, he's willing to do something that he, you know, admitted may impact his ability to rent units by putting the businesses not on the south side. So I think, while I understand Councilmember Waterfield is concerned that he didn't reach out to the Lopez's, I appreciate that Mr. Lopez acknowledged that he didn't reach out either, so I appreciate that as well. And, you know, I would like the idea of a wall. I don't know what the cost is, and I don't know if we have the ability to put that condition in at this point. But definitely in terms of our downtown plan, I mean, when we look at what the front of that building looks like now, and we look at the drawings, you know, with water features and plants and all of that, that is what we said we wanted in downtown, so.
Ms. Shaw?
Well, yeah, I'm on. I've, well, I'll tell you what, the parking, and I live in a subdivision that continually has parking problems. People like the shortest route to whatever. And hustling off to the library is really a stretch. And I do like the wall issue. I think that would certainly isolate between the restaurant and its activities and the activities on the hotel side or the commercial side, then there wouldn't be looking back and forth at each other rather than looking at whatever the color of the wall is. As far as who you can rent to, you know, that's an impossibility to regulate for anybody. It's just an unknown. But I guess this development is not a development that is children-friendly. And to think that if we're going to have children there and they're going to go to Maldonado Center or someplace else, you know, we've got parks that people don't send their kids to a block away from their house. You know, it's either use the backyard, front yard, or the street. So I'm concerned. But evidently, since they're, you can rent it to, I don't know how you, or legally, if you can object to a family moving in or someone having babies and living there. So that's a basic concern of mine, too. It's a starting point for the downtown specific plan. And I think Councilman Boyson has indicated we put a lot of time and energy into that, and not just in this location, but others that allow for less parking. Hopefully, that everyone gets along with each other and I guess get your clients to come in every hour on the hour and move along, and, you know, your parking space is adequate to handle that. I would love to have, I guess, the two combatants, shall I say, or property owners. That's a little better. With the help of our people to really look seriously at the closure of the gate, number one, or to install a wall along that corridor, then that will certainly give the emphasis for the people, I'll say, the livers there, to use the parking on the backside. And maybe Peter and them might come up with a configuration of how they can rent some space to indicate that if there's going to be problems, that we'll negotiate this. And those parking spaces are actually a little closer than the libraries, I guess, in trying to remember traveling around and coming out of the old, I can't remember what it was called, Valley Farmer, when the restaurant was there in your facility now, Sula's. So that's kind of the general discussion that I have, so.
Okay. And I'm last. This is an older building. This is built in 1959, and the standards that we all lived in in 1959 are so different than they are today. I live not too far from a building, a hall where dances go on on Friday, Saturday night, and it's over 65 decibels, and I'm a block away. And I, you know, I just can't get up and move. These people in an apartment, if they don't like the noise, they don't like the smell, they don't have to lease again. And they have learned their lesson, that they don't want to live near a restaurant or anything else that causes noises. Those are life lessons, as far as I am concerned. We have standards for our downtown specific plan that we've put together, and we have mulled over, and we have changed. And to me, this fits with a mixed use in the downtown specific plan. I am not a great proponent of mixed use, but I thought this really fit the bill of what mixed use would look like in Santa Maria. I did not vote for or support a mixed use that we did over on East Boone, but I think this fits the bill. When I met with Mr. Mulhulter, he said that he was going to manage the apartments. So, and I expect him not only to manage, but to control who moves in and moves out. I have seen apartments managed very well in the city of Santa Maria, and I've seen some that are terrible. And we have apartment buildings here in the city of Santa Maria that don't have the amenities that I think that they should have, but they are older apartments. They don't have places for kids to play. They don't have the covering for the trash cans and everything. And I think they should, but they were built a long time ago. And so now we're dealing with a building, like I said, was built in 1959 and looks terrible. So other than an earthquake happening that would completely demolish the building, I think the facade is going to look much better. And I just, what else? And you said they were going to be market-grade apartments? Is that correct? So they are not going to be low-income? I can't imagine H2A even being a consideration, that they would even use those down there. And I think that's about all. As long as we fit in the parameters of what the downtown specific plan is, that, you know, and I don't even care about, I think you can have a disclaimer for the noise, but as far as using the upstairs, I think you should just use it all for residential. I don't have a problem with that. And if people don't want to live there, then they can move. And they have that option, you know? I probably wouldn't want to live there, but you have that option to move, so.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Boyson.
May I make a suggestion with the council's concurrence? If, perhaps we can add in a condition, number 30, that would require the wall for consideration of the wall? And if for any reason it is just not viable, then the project needs to come back to City Council for...
Well, we wouldn't have to do that, because if the wall wouldn't be built, then they'd be in violation of their conditions, and they couldn't go forward.
Well, no, but I'm just saying that if for any reason, I mean, if it can't be designed properly and still have the, you know, proper width for cars egressing, or if for any reason that gate needs to be there for safety reasons, et cetera, then it would just need to come back to the City Council for reconsideration. So, I mean, we're kind of doing stuff on the fly here.
That's okay.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we don't have our planning book in front of us.
I've got the draft condition. I'm just curious, at this point, are we talking about a wall as in a masonry wall? Or are we talking about a solid fence?
I would say, I would say a masonry wall, a six-foot-high masonry wall would be my choice.
Do I see nods to that effect? If, no? Okay.
I'm curious about what, I mean, do we have an estimate of what the cost of that would be to the applicant?
No idea of the cost. Obviously, a block wall is going to cost a lot more than a solid fence. But let me read the condition I have. I'll say wall/fence, and then you can tell me if you like the condition, and maybe we can figure something out about pricing. Condition 30 would say, "The owner shall replace the southern chain-link fence with a solid wall/fence, a minimum of six feet in height. The wall/fence shall be constructed prior to the first occupancy of a residential unit. If the wall cannot be constructed, then the project shall return to the City Council for reconsideration." So that would be the wording, obviously. Maybe if you want to hear from the applicant, maybe he's amenable to the wall, if that seems to be something.
Mr. Mulhulter, if you'd like to, come to the podium, please.
I have an expert here, Ed Lefyker. He's part of the RRM Design Group that's going to be helping me build the construction drawings. And I think the figure he threw out, based on his past experiences, it's almost $100 to $125 a lineal foot if you want to do a masonry wall six feet high, right? What I would suggest is that I already have a chain-link fence there. There will be at least five feet of landscaping work that's going to be done right by the chain-link fence. So the gate will never be a question of people trying to come in and out of that gate. It'll be completely sealed off. In that landscaping area, there are at least 10 to 11 trees being planted that are going to be about 12 to 15 feet high. They're called Carolina laurels, and that's been approved by the Parks and Rec Department. So coupled with the trees and a permanent fence, I'm not sure that, and might make, I mean, I'm not sure what a masonry wall would do than, you know, what I already have planned within the documents.
And what type of permanent fence were you suggesting? The same chain-link that you have?
I could put a more beautiful fence, if you like, right? Today, it's a chain-link fence. I could put a wrought iron fence, if that's what the City Council desires. But, you know, something that is both aesthetically good-looking, as well as it takes into account all the landscaping that's going to be done around that whole area. And that's almost 120, 25 feet, I believe, of chain-link fence right now. So it is, it's not a small number.
So it would be about 15, say, $15,000 to $20,000 to install a masonry fence?
Correct.
Is that a deal killer?
No, it's certainly not a deal killer. It's certainly not a deal killer. But I guess what I'm suggesting is that, you know, I am already doing a fair amount of landscaping work, right? And I've got a permanent fence on that, which doesn't allow for true traffic because of that. And, you know, I also want to take this option to address some concerns about bike racks and storage. That is another condition that's already in, is if you look at the document, that I'm going to be putting bike racks in storage there.
Okay.
But if, you know, if the council feels strongly about a wall, I mean, I'm happy to put one, but I think that's just an, you know, inordinate burden, right?
I think, for me, I'd like some clarification about why we're asking for the wall. Are we asking for the wall because we think it's going to be an additional sound barrier? Or because it's just going to prevent cross-through traffic? Because we don't need a masonry wall.
Yeah, and you're right, Councilmember Zuniga. I don't think we're really looking at significant sound savings by a concrete wall, especially if they're up on the second story. The noise is going to flow through, so.
So maybe just something that upgrades from a chain-link fence, something that's more aesthetically pleasing and goes with the landscaping and the trees. It would be nice for your residents and your commercial businesses as well. The second issue I'd like to talk about, the mayor Patino brought up, was the amendment to item four, or the addition to item four regarding having the, you know, commercial units upstairs. I agree with the mayor that I think that we should have all the residential housing, as it was proposed, upstairs, and the commercials downstairs. I think that's a better flow. And I think that when I read the staff report, it said that there were going to, the business hours were going to be limited, so you're not going to have businesses there in the evenings, correct? And the gate's going to be only accessible by the residents. So the residents will have sole run of the property and the parking spaces in the evenings.
Correct.
Yes. And we would expect that the residents will be out during the day.
Yeah, but I think that was kind of the point of putting the commercial on that side, is just to provide that additional buffer in the evenings for the noise, so.
Yeah, I don't, yeah. I agree with the mayor. I don't think it's necessary, and just visually in terms of flow, it just seems weird to me. But, yeah.
Well, we're going to need some direction on number four, because it obviously sounds like we don't have consensus there. It seemed like the other conditions were okay, so we just kind of see.
You know, one more comment I want to make. This was passed by the planning commission on a 5-0 vote also.
4-0, yeah.
It says 5-0.
Oh, it was, well, I thought, what's his name?
Then the staff reports are wrong.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
There was an interim. Well, I would certainly acquiesce to the mayor and... Well, I would certainly acquiesce to the mayor and Councilmember Zuniga, if that's what it takes to move this forward. I, you know, it would be my preference, from a good neighbor's side, to, you know, put the residential on the other side and provide the buffer. But if the mayor and Councilmember Zuniga feel that that isn't necessary, I can support this project. I think it's an important project.
I think it is, too.
That we go forward. And I would then say that eliminate number 30, as we discussed, and go with the existing landscaping and decorative fence, and just try and get rid of that gate, if at all possible.
Okay, okay. Do I have a motion?
I can, I can do that.
Okay.
I can do that. So with that, I would move for approving the downtown permit DT 2016-001 for 504 South Broadway as amended.
I'll second.
And I'm sorry, I didn't hear what the final outcome was for condition number four, if it was going with or without the...
And so, condition number four, we would be eliminating the underlying...
Okay, thank you.
But not requiring it. He can still change the residential route, should he so desire.
Okay, but that's Resolution 2016-27?
2016-27, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Nice second.
Second, okay, it's moved in second to adopt Resolution Number 26-27. It's moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm Madam Clerk. Could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
No, and I hope my colleagues aren't making a big mistake on this. This is, this is a very touchy situation in the location it's in, and I hope I'm proven wrong, but it's a strong no.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
I'm going to say yes.
And Madam Mayor, Patino?
Yes.
If I could just, Mr. Lopez, I'm going to give you my cellphone number, and if you have problems, you can call me 911.
Could you come up to the podium, Mr. Lopez, so we can hear? Because we need to record this, that's the only reason.
The discussion was too fast for me. Is the wall going to be placed or not? I guess, that's my question.
My understanding, Mr. Oble...
No, my understanding is that it's because of the five-foot landscaping that's there, the applicant's plan is already to be putting in some type of a fence or decorative fence or something, so it's up to him. If he wants to go with that, he can, but it's not being a requirement for a solid block wall.
That was my question, thank you.
Thank you. You know, I'd like to make, someone commented on how, and this was before my time, how the spearmint rhino was put in there, and we didn't do our due diligence on that and anything. But I can assure you, I was watching at the time that the City Council put all kinds of conditions they could and, right, as legally as they could. So there was a lot to have done on it. Well, you were here, weren't you, Mr. Hayden, or not?
Yep.
Yeah. So that wasn't just, just in a whimsical manner done, so...
No, it wasn't.
They were really upset about that, but, oh, well. The next order of business is another public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider an appeal by Sequoia Development Services on behalf of Verizon Wireless of the Planning Commission's denial of a conditional use permit to construct a 50-foot-tall monopole telecommunications tower at 232 North Ben Wiley Avenue.
Staff report is to be made by Community Development Director, Mr. Oble.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. I've got the wrong one up here, so we will advance. Here we go. Just to give you an idea of where the project site is located, you can see we have West Main Street towards the bottom of the picture here. If you're heading west on Main, you know, Railroad Depot, you cross the little grocery store, liquor store that's on the corner here, and then the next corner is where the little gas station is, and then past that is where Nancy Stewart's Honda dealership used to be. So, turning north on Ben Wiley, you go up about a half-block, and even though this area has housing and stuff, it's, actually, these homes here, I'll show them the next slide, are zoned for commercial manufacturing. And then, right in front of the property, got a parking lot area and then a warehouse. And next to the warehouse is where the plan is for the tower. Here's the zone districts for the area. Again, commercial manufacturing coming up off of Main, large R2, which is duplex units that are allowed, and then an R3 for multiple-family residential. And then right in front of the project site, even though, again, in CM, you have residential here and residential here.
Excuse me, Mr. Oble, I need to interrupt you. I can't hear this project.
Oh, a little too close. Sorry.
So, Ms. Waterfield? Ms. Waterfield will be taken over.
Can we go back to the previous project? Just kidding.
Sure. We'll just hit the highlights.
Okay, let's go back.
Okay, so, here is a picture of the project, looking straight from Ben Wiley, looking towards, what you can see is the large PG&E power pole. And then we add in here the photo simulation of the, of the telecommunications site. The tower, the PG&E, is about 75 feet, I believe, and the applicant is requesting 50 feet for the telecommunications. Again, here's the area next to the warehouse where the tower is to be located.
How many railroad tracks?
Railroad tracks used to be just over in this area here, along this, this area. So the Planning Commission had a couple hearings on this. The first one was November 4th, and staff had initially recommended approval of the project, but going into the hearing, information that was presented to the commission and their independent review, they believed that there was more information that needed to be provided by the applicant before they were willing to make a decision. It had to do mainly with, what do the neighbors think about having a 50-foot telecommunications facility that would be very visible from their neighborhood? And we, as staff, require a 300-foot notice, which goes out to property owners. So if you, let's say, had a rental in the area, or you owned an apartment complex, there would be one notice that would go out, and it would go to the owner of the property. And so, what we asked the applicant to do, and what they did, is they took our notice, modified it a little bit, and then they sent it to each of the individual addresses in the area. But what the Planning Commission had asked for was some type of a neighborhood meeting, or going door-to-door, asking people, letting them know about this project, because they felt that it was an area that just might not understand what was going on with the project. And so Verizon and their agents, as I said, sent out the notices to the neighbors, but they were reluctant to actually step foot into the neighborhoods. From listening to the tapes and talking to staff, it sounded like there might have been fear for going in there. They were willing to maybe have some other represented group try to have a neighborhood meeting for them, but they didn't want to go into the neighborhood themselves and talk on a one-to-one basis in there. They did use their Verizon texting, and they sent out to, I think, all of the north end of town. A number of our staff got that. But again, that would only be for Verizon customers, and I think the question was pretty nondescript. I think it said something to the effect, would you like improved services in your area? As opposed to, you know, a new, new cell-site facility at this specific location. So, we didn't think that was very effective. And so, coming back on December 16th, the commission wasn't satisfied that Verizon had made a concerted effort to get information from the adjacent neighborhood. The commission suggested a continuance to the end of January to give them another opportunity, and the agent for Verizon said, "We'll take a denial." And so, the CUP was denied. And then, a couple weeks later, the appeal was filed on December 29th. And on the appellant's claim for the appeal, they had two points. One is that the Planning Commission lacks substantial evidence for the findings of denial. And the second was that the denial violates other provisions of federal law and constitutes a prohibition of service. Get rid of that laser. So first, talking about the lack substantial evidence, the negative aesthetic impacts, we believe, are sufficient justification to deny a permit. That's one of the things that the federal government has still allowed local agencies to be able to identify as a reason for denying projects. The resolution from the Planning Commission, Number 2678, documents substantial evidence used by the commission to make those denial findings, and they're summarized below. The monopole is in clear view from surrounding properties on Ben Wiley Avenue. No other structures of comparable height in the area except for a PG&E transmission structure, and no unique circumstances that justify an exception to the 40-foot height limit. Now, again, they were asking for 50 feet, which was 10 feet above what the limitations were for that particular zone district. And then some additional substantial evidence. The city has, on its website, an administrative guideline for wireless communication facilities, which was prepared back in September of 2000. And it has some regulations in there, some guidelines for how to cite new facilities. And in this case, they said, "New facilities should be cited to minimize visual impacts. Antennas should be located out of the skyline as much as possible." The third one is, "Use the least visually obtrusive support structure." And four, "Tower should conform to the height of the applicable zone district." And then their second reason for recommending or suggesting that their, the project should be appealed is denial, the denial constitutes a prohibition of service. Well, as part of the application packet, and what the appellant, or the applicant gave the Planning Commission, was a PowerPoint called "Necessity Case," and it documents that adequate phone service already exists in this part of the city, and that's in your packet as Attachment 8. And then there's no substantiating evidence to support a claim that a minority community is not receiving wireless service. I was up in the area doing a site visit last week, and I had four bars on my, on my phone, and I've got a Verizon phone. So, I know service works in the area. I know they're going to be talking about trying to expand the data service in the area, but for a basic phone service, it seems to work fairly well in that area. And then number three, there's no evidence that lack of a new telecommunications facility will interfere with the police maintaining safety of the community. So, as we try to do, we try to provide alternatives to recommendations, and in this case, alternatives to the denial. So the first one I want to just bring up is that we suggested considering placement of the antennas on the adjacent PG&E transmission tower. They had told us initially that that couldn't be done because there is a gas line or something that runs underneath the ground in that same corridor that they wouldn't be able to put in a vault, or whatever they wanted to do for their control equipment. But just up the street, at the corner of Donovan and Railroad, Sprint has a telecommunications facility that's atop the PG&E tower there, and so they made that work. So what I was going to just put on the table here is the possibility is, you know, we know they can't put the control building in that right-of-way by the PG&E tower. They can still put the antennas on top of PG&E if they wanted to, and use the same property where they're, they're setting up a lease arrangement for the tower and the control building, and put the control building on that, on that adjacent property. So that seems to be an alternative. A second one would be to consider development of the tower with a maximum height of 40 feet, instead of the 50 that they're asking for, which makes that then consistent with the CM Zone District and consistent with our guidelines that we provided. And then third is, if you want to, you still have the ability to grant the appeal and overturn the Planning Commission decision, and then allow the project to proceed. So those are the three alternatives. And then our recommendation is to deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's denial based on findings in the public record. That completes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Oble. Do we have any questions for Mr. Oble?
Just a point of clarification, Madam Mayor, pro tem, and that would be that I think that you were incorrect on the Planning Commission denial. I think it was three to one. You mentioned that both in your staff report, as well as the minutes of the, the minutes of the Planning Commission that I read.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
So... I don't have any questions until after I hear from the applicant.
Would the applicant like to make any comments? Thank you.
Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Pete Chubin. I'm with Sequoia Deployment Services here tonight, representing Verizon Wireless. The items that are being handed out to you, there are things I'm going to mention if you have questions, so I could answer them, but in, for the sake of time, I won't go through the fine details of each, but as I reference them and mention their contents, you have them for any questions that you may ask. Staff is correct, the project is for a 50-foot monopole. We originally started looking at this location in this corridor, at the PG&E towers. We are aware of the Sprint Tower that's further up the road. We're also aware that the gas line that is here, that PG&E told us prohibited use of this specific tower, changes to the opposite side of the street as you move farther up to the north end of town. And there's some stations up there that are on the east side of the street, while the towers maintain on the west side. We're not familiar with why the Sprint Tower was allowed, but that could provide an explanation from PG&E's standpoint of why they told us this tower was not available to us for an antenna attachment. Neither were these in this immediate location. So we know how PG&E accepts antennas on towers. We do those types of projects all the time, and it was how we started before we were told no by PG&E. We started with a 50-foot monopole, as mainly with a steel structure next to another steel structure. We thought about other ideas. One of the items that was discussed with staff and came as a staff suggestion was to actually make the monopole taller. Let's go with a 75-foot taller-type pole to allow for future colocation, multiple carriers on one tower. We all know that colocation, shared towers is done all the time. While we didn't object to that, we understand why that idea went away, and let future colocation come in on its own merits at that time, under the laws, when it's necessary. We had also discussed a monopine facility with staff and with the Planning Commission, and that was something that was looked at as being out of place for this location, there's no tall trees, even though in multiple parts of town, there's monopines immediately next to homes. In the packet I handed out is a photosim. It's in, should be one of the last documents, the 11-by-17 page, that shows a photosim of what a monopine would look like in this location. We had thought about also a water tank design that would completely conceal the antennas inside of it. It would be at the same height. We did not present that to staff. I do have pictures of design concepts that we could discuss tonight if the council so desired to take a look at them. But we really came back to the monopole as being the least intrusive design based on the environment. And it was interesting, at both hearings, more time was spent on other issues rather than the design of the facility. And so, to get into those issues, it's important to discuss, why here? Why at this address in this part of town? As was mentioned, it's a CM Zone property, surrounded, as that map showed, with residential on all sides, except to the south. We talked to those other property owners to the south, and got told no, they were interested in doing something else with the property, or there were apparent code violations, parking problems, things that prohibited the use of those parcels. So we ended up with this location as a way to separate the facility as much as possible from residential uses, even though it's surrounded blocks away on three sides by residential. The alternate design that was asked of by us, by the Planning Commission, was ODAS, or an outdoor distributed antenna system. Now, that system is much lower, and as its name implies, it's distributed out, which means you would have antenna nodes immediately adjacent to homes, or depending on where the utility poles are in the residential neighborhoods, you would have them in front yards. The equipment on the pole, the meter pedestal, or what people would consider their front yards, which is really the public right-of-way, that additional parkway in front where the utility poles or light poles are located. utility poles or light poles are located. And the proposal separates as much as possible the antenna site from the area it's intended to serve. We were asked about a location in Montecito as an example. Well, we know Verizon Wireless used O-DAS in Montecito down near Santa Barbara. And when that came up, when we brought that back as an applicant's representative to Verizon Wireless, to the engineers, they said, "That's interesting. Yes, we did participate in an O-DAS system designed down in Montecito years ago. It did not provide the necessary service." And that was subsequently replaced with a monopine facility for Verizon Wireless to provide the service to that community that AT&amp;T later came and co-located on. So the DAS system that was for those carriers ended up not working and was replaced with a macrocell facility. That's the appropriate type of facility for this type of environment. O-DAS is great when you have canyons, either urban or natural, narrow roads through areas, but not for a flat, built-out area, as that we're trying to provide service here. This location has a very high demand for Verizon Wireless services. It's not just voice, it is also data. It is also important to note that voice will soon become data, as it's become digital. It's now going to transition to voice-over LTE, and our engineer is here tonight to explain that if you want to hear about it. But a data problem is a voice problem in the wireless world today. This site would fill the gap in coverage to the immediate neighborhoods surrounding the site without putting the actual site into the neighborhoods every couple of residential blocks. That's why it's important to note that a macrocell facility is the least intrusive means to provide the service, because the alternative, if we don't build a tower, is to put multiple nodes next to homes.
Excuse me, Mr. Schuman?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
This tower, how many customers does it serve, or do you go out and measure it by miles or feet, or how do you determine that?
The engineer can better describe that, but it's really a demand-driven item. You reach a point of capacity where even though the site might send a signal farther, there's so many customers with so much usage in that area that you need another site to provide that service, because it's akin to a road. You know, a road, a set number of cars could travel, you put too many on it, you need more lanes or another road.
Makes sense.
It's one of those.
Okay.
So Verizon Wireless is looking to fill the gap in service that is created by the demand in the neighborhoods surrounding the site. And this is for voice and data and emergency services. As was mentioned, a gentleman mentioned he has a Verizon phone. The city has approximately 200 subscribed lines to Verizon Wireless that are used by various departments, including the police. And it's important to have service, not only so us as customers living in a community could use it, so we could communicate with emergency services, and they could receive calls and make calls as well. So it's everyone using the phones now for neat and unique things that we did not think about years ago, using our wireless phones for, that necessitate additional facilities. The community deserves high-quality service and the required infrastructure. That's one part. Service requires infrastructure. That is what we're proposing, is that high-quality service for these neighborhoods surrounding the facility. Other points about a macrocell versus outdoor DAS systems is battery backup and the robustness of the facility. Because there's more capacity with a macrocell facility, the site can decide and listen to the network of where to provide that capacity over that service area. It's more flexible in that regard. It also has backup power, so in the event of a long-term power outage where a DAS node would stop working, the cell site, the macrocell facility like the one proposed, would continue to provide service because it has its own onsite power supply. Also, a key component that's often forgot about is upgradability. When we go in and we need to install a facility into a community, it is something with technology changes so rapid that we need to do antenna changes, we need to do equipment changes inside the radio equipment, something that would not even be noticeable to somebody offsite. When we're looking at an O-DAS-type system, and those items are immediately adjacent to homes, we need to go make that change on that facility immediately adjacent to the homes. So a macrocell facility like the one proposed provides flexibility, upgradability over time, so it helps keep the site modern and up-to-date in providing the best service. As service improves, as new technologies allow more capacity improve, the site supports those items. Staff had mentioned community outreach, and that is really where the Planning Commission spent the most time. They discussed that more than the appearance of the facility or the need for the facility. What did Verizon Wireless do to reach out to the community? They had asked us to go door-to-door or do door knockers. One of the key components of why we chose not to do that is verifiability. Could that type of activity be verified? We did not want to go back to the commission and say, "Yeah, we went door-to-door, no one was home," and get a response of, "Well, go door-to-door again. I've been to the project site multiple times. The neighbor closest has never been home when I've been there. There's people walking around, but we don't know who they are." And, you know, really, we didn't want to approach them on the street and sound like a salesman here, "Buy this." So what we did is we sent a mailer, and it was done to owners and occupants. So the owner's side matched the mailing that the city sends out. The occupants was to each apartment or unit on the property. So if an owner was there, he got multiple mailings. If he was offsite and he had tenants, the tenants received it. It was in English and Spanish. It's, if you want to look at a copy, it's included in the documents I handed out tonight. It also included a description of the property, the project, excuse me, a site plan, and a photo simulation of it. Those items, and there were 108 mailers that were sent out, resulted in us receiving one phone call.
Wow.
And it was from the apartment building that's north and a little northwest of the project site. It was from the owner's mother who called us to say, you know, "Why do I keep receiving paperwork on this? And, you know, what are you doing? You know, is this going on my property? Is that why I'm getting this?" You know, and so we answered those questions. We answered about access, we explained where it was going, we referenced the dockings that were included in the mailing. She thanked us, and we hadn't heard from her since. The text campaign, using modern technology, that identified in the text the specific address of the site, that it was the development of a new tower, resulted in 820 positive responses and 17 negative responses. And a summary of some of those responses is included in the items that I handed out. So using the modern tools that people are used to, receiving and replying to, got more of a response that we were able to give to the Planning Commission. We went back to the Planning Commission, and we got asked, you know, "Why didn't we go to door-to-door?" We explained those items. And one of the responses we received was that there was inadequate information to provide the finding for an impact to the neighborhood. We can't decide if this is acceptable or not because there's nobody here complaining about this project. We provided the notice, we did the outreach. The project was denied. In addition to filing the appeal, we continued our outreach efforts. And this was done primarily on February 18th at the Healthy School Pantry event. I understand it's a monthly event. We did research on, you know, who is this audience that we're being asked to reach, and we had to go find that information, and we did. We set up a booth, we answered questions, and in the documentation, you could see that there's a listing of people in support of the project that signed it. 15 individuals. We talked with approximately 50 or 60 individuals about Verizon Wireless, about wireless service, about what we're doing, had the exhibits laid out on the table so we could explain it to them. And that's really what we did to reach out to the community. We've been cooperative with different design alternatives at this location. We would be happy to discuss those with the council. But what we're really looking for is support for our appeal and support for providing reliable and quality service to this community surrounding this facility. And there's our engineer here, is here tonight to speak as well, as one other party is representing the applicant. Before we switch, is there any questions specific to what I had said?
Do any of the council members have questions for Mr. Schuman?
Mr. Boyson.
I do, several. So is it not true, then, Mr. Schuman, that you conveyed to staff when asked about engaging the neighborhood that you were uncomfortable and unwilling to have your employees or hired a consultant enter the neighborhood on foot, that you were unwilling to do that because you were concerned about your safety?
We had been told by our property owner that this area provides a barrier between two groups that tend to fight with each other, and we had some concerns about safety. We also had the other concern about being approached. We were told that this community doesn't come out much, doesn't want to come forward to the city a lot, and that coming up to them would create a situation of door-knocking and going door-to-door would create somewhat of an adverse situation time and time again. Why are these people coming to me? Why are you asking me to sign something? Why are you asking me about this? Which is why we looked out for the, when we found the Healthy School Pantry event, a monthly event, that the event we were at had over 1,000 people that came and walked through it. It was actually quite interesting that that was an environment where we were there and available, and people could come up to us and we could explain rather than us going to their homes. There was that coupled with the verifiability component, that you didn't get any responses. Did you really go do this?
So you made the decision not to go and engage the community, the neighbors in the neighborhood, based on feedback you got from one person, five people, that the neighborhood wasn't safe, that it was gang-infested, and that the people wouldn't appreciate your efforts to engage them?
We didn't neglect to engage them. We chose to engage them by mail with exhibits in two languages with numbers of English and Spanish speakers. We chose the different means.
So let's talk about the pantry. So there were, and I'm very familiar with that project. We have staff there every week when the pantry's operating. So there were close to 1,200 people at the pantry.
Yeah, 1,100 and is the number we were given.
91, so nine short of 1,200. I'll concede that to you. And you spoke to approximately 50 to 60 people, or the team members that were there spoke to approximately 50 to 60 people. And you had 15 people sign that they thought the project was a good idea. You're asserting that those 15 people lived within the required range to sign the paper, yet I don't know how you vetted that, because on this document, there's no addresses. So if your concern was you weren't going to be able to provide the council with vetted inform, the Planning Commission with vetted information that you, that would be documented, why did you provide us a document that's got 15 figures on it? You're telling us, well, those 15 people out of the 50 or 60 people that you spoke to all lived within that 300 area, and there's no addresses. Why wouldn't you put an address on here?
We can't force someone to put an address.
You didn't put a line for an address. Why would they put an address? There's no line on here for an address. You asked them for their name, you asked them for comments, and you asked them to sign it. You didn't offer them the opportunity to make the choice to put their address or not. So essentially, you've presented me with a document saying, "Believe me that these 15 people out of 1,200 people that were at the event and 50, 60 people that we spoke to signed saying that they supported the tower."
All we're saying is those were the people who signed at the event.
No, you say in here that many of the individuals and families who stopped to talk with Verizon did not live within the 300-foot radius of the subject, so did not sign the roster, which then, I'm thinking, what you're trying to convey to me is that they didn't sign it because they didn't live, so that the people who did sign it do.
We're conveying that these are the people who were willing to sign.
No, that's not what, that's not what this piece of paper conveys. That's not what your comments here conveys. So I'm curious, I'm just, I'm curious about Verizon's business plan, and is it part of Verizon's business plan to erect these towers in socio-economic blighted neighborhoods in which you were concerned about your safety to have, you know, your staff or your representatives go to because it might be gang members or the people weren't going to appreciate you? So is that part of your business plan? And I have to say, I was one of the people who got the text, and, you know, it was a very kind of generic text. I didn't feel engaged by the text. I felt insulted by the text because I knew what was going on behind it. It didn't convey to people who were receiving the text that there was concern. It was like, "Would you like to improve your name, would you like to improve your service?" You know, text yes or no. I was one of the 17 who texted no. I live close to that neighborhood. I've lived there my whole life. I've raised seven kids there. I have 15 grandchildren who come and visit me on a regular basis, and none of us are concerned about walking around our community. And when I was running for city council, I walked that neighborhood at least half a dozen times, and none of those people ever acted like they were, did not appreciate my efforts to engage them. So I'm just, I'm concerned about your characterization, first of all, of the community and the people who live there, and that you're basing it on a comment that you heard from somebody.
With regard to your question of what neighborhoods Verizon is looking to erect sites in, Verizon is looking to erect sites and provide services to everyone, and that is why this is here. We need to build sites in other communities as well. We thought it interesting that the example that was given to us was one in Montecito, where similar questions came up and similar efforts were put forth with O-DAS, then changing over to a tower that would best serve that type of environment. So it's not a, an issue of a certain community as much as everybody deserves good wireless service and infrastructure, and that's Verizon's goal, is to provide that service to everyone.
Your other comments regarding your impressions of the commission being more concerned about what the community felt than about the necessity for Verizon to have the tire there, have the tower there, I think is what I would expect from a planning commission. I think the planning commission is appointed by council members who are elected by the city community, by city residents, who expect us, through our commissioners, to do what's in the best interest of the city, not what's in the best interest of Verizon. And I know we can debate whether or not that tower pole there and the service it's going to provide is in the best interest, but I think the planning commission, at least my planning commissioner, did exactly what I would have expected him to do. His concern should be, how is this going to impact the community and how do they feel about it? So your assertion that they, I'm perceiving that your assertion that they spent more time talking about that was like wasted time, and I think that's exactly what they should have been talking about.
No, it wasn't wasted time, which is why we went through those efforts with the mailers and with the text campaign, and with even after that decision, continuing to reach out to the community.
Councilmember Boyson, did you have a comment?
Well, I don't know that we're in discussion mode yet.
No, we're not. Just, if you have a comment for Mr. Schuman?
I don't really have any discussion, but I should probably at this time, by way of ex parte. I did visit with Sequoia Group at the site and was given a tour and was given an explanation of the project.
Okay, fantastic. And your engineer, he's here. I'd like to, I'd like to know the surrounding site, the customers, how you determine if it's by numbers or feet or miles?
So the site that we're offloading is actually very close to here, and there's a map as part of that, what we call a best server map, that shows the area that would be covered by, the area, the, it's a colored map. The colors are associated with what sector particularly currently covers an area. A sector is one-third of a cell site, and on the map, you have, that is shown in red. That is the sector it's overloading. It's actually on a property just on the other side, the mall here, on a tall building. That's one of the old original sites from Santa Maria, and it's overloaded in that direction headed out there. How do we choose this? We need a place that's approximately equidistant between this site and the next site over from that. So I'm the person that picked that area. We had some potential good projects there. I looked at it, I saw, hey, we've got some PG&E towers here. We like PG&E towers, they're great. Looked at that, said, okay, let's put an X on the map here, let's look for something in this particular area, okay? Had nothing to do with the socioeconomic, but one thing we have learned is that in some... Had nothing to do with the socio-economic, but one thing we have learned is that in some of the lower-income communities where the population density per house is greater, the sizes of the properties are smaller, and there's rentals, people are less likely to have Wi-Fi in their homes, they are more likely to use their smartphone as their sole internet, telephone, everything. So we've learned this in several communities, that these are areas that we do need to service. They need our service frequently, much more so than more affluent neighborhoods do. We don't want to shy away from them. We want to provide that service for them.
Oh, absolutely. A customer's a customer, and you provide a service, so that's understood.
And regards to the need case, very much like you'd said, it's like a freeway. If you have a two-lane road between here and Santa Barbara, you're connected to Santa Barbara, but at some point, the traffic is going to overwhelm that road. And that's the case that we have here, is the amount of traffic. We project two years in advance. I was out there yesterday, did a couple of speed tests. It's below our standards that we'd like to see in any neighborhood. That was at 2:00, I think it was 2:00 in the afternoon. We do know that in these residential areas, when school lets out at 3:00, our traffic surges by about 30, 40 percent. That traffic period runs until about 10:00 PM in residential areas, and then it starts dropping off. So in residential areas, it is important for us to have that service there, have it in the evenings, and have the capabilities. It was substandard at 2:00. I don't know what it'll be like at 8:00 at night, but I can, with a 40 percent, normal 40 percent traffic increase in that time period, I'd expect it to be much worse. Our traffic grows by, on the data networks, which will soon be the voice networks, grows by about 60 percent per year. So if we could do nothing, if, let me know. If you guys don't want me to do anything in these neighborhoods, I don't have a problem with that. It's that easy. I can go on, you know, we can go on to the next neighborhood. But I think we're doing a disservice for that community if we do it. And for that reason, I'm trying to build a site there.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any comments for the engineer? Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Paul Albright, and I'm outside counsel for Verizon Wireless, and I'm the third speaker of the applicant. You've been very patient with us, so I'll be very brief. And we do appreciate your time and all of your questions tonight. I think you've heard it's Verizon Wireless's intent to try and improve its wireless service for all of Santa Maria. This is a site that will offload capacity for a network within Santa Maria that's overloaded by cell splitting, is what it's called, and this will benefit the network throughout Santa Maria, and that's why when you ask how many people this will benefit, it'll benefit people who use the downtown facility as well as this facility and as well as the next facility over. I want to address a couple of quick items. Verizon Wireless came, worked with the planning commission to provide something they felt was an approvable project. The planning department recommended approval of the project. They said that with a 50-foot tower, with landscaping that will actually improve the neighborhood by putting landscaping all the way down the access roadway into the project to end with landscaping around the project itself. And the planning department, in its staff report in November, said that there was not a significant aesthetic impact from this facility, that the 75-foot PG&E tower was the dominant visible character in that neighborhood, and that there was no significant impact. They were also, were able to find facts to make all of seven, all seven findings that were required under your code in order to approve the project. The planning commission understandably took a very long look at it, and they were concerned about input from the community, and we are concerned about input from the community as well. But the only fact that the planning commission provided for why this site was unacceptable was that it was visible from the roadway. The unique circumstances to allow the taller height above the current height was the 75-foot pole next to it, the 75-foot PG&E tower, and the height of the adjacent building that we have to, our antennas have to be able to shoot over that building. So we think there was ample significant evidence for approval, but no significant evidence for denial. And we think that unto itself violates the federal law, which says you have to have substantial evidence, you have to have facts for why a site is not approvable. We also felt that this denial could constitute a prohibition of service. And I want to just say that capacity gaps have been recognized by federal courts as a significant gap in terms of the federal law. There is in fact a case that came down from the 10th Circuit just yesterday that identifies a capacity gap as a significant gap. So we feel that there is a gap in service. And we've provided, in our packet to you, a statement by Dwayne Bonham, the RF engineer you just spoke to, that shows that the facilities that are serving this area have reached their maximum capacity. They've reached a level where they can't provide any more data to the area that they're providing. And we've provided you a very robust alternatives analysis. With six alternatives we evaluated that show that this really is the least intrusive location. And as the zoning map showed, it's the only industrial commercial area surrounded by residential where your guidelines direct us to go. We're directed away from residential zones and to industrial zones. So we think for those two reasons, those two reasons argue in favor of your supporting the appeal and allowing the facility. But I want to back up for a minute, and I want to say that it really is Verizon Wireless's intention to provide service to the Santa Maria area in a way that is not offensive by locating its facility in a commercial zone next to a 75-foot existing PG&E tower. If we can provide you with additional information that allows you to grant our appeal, we want to do that. Verizon Wireless did go beyond what any of your other applicants tonight were required to do in terms of noticing, in terms of sending multilingual notices out to occupants and residents on multiple occasions and sending a text message. So we think we've done more, but we may not have done enough. We visited a community meeting, and if it's something that will help you approve our site, we would be honored if councilmembers who need it would help us hold a community meeting in the area.
I'd be happy to.
We can provide additional information. We're willing to look at designs like a water tank, if that would be attractive in this particular area. But these networks are very difficult to develop. Everybody wants to have their cellphone work, and as you heard, data use is doubling every year, but it's extremely difficult to locate these facilities. As you might imagine, I had a hearing, a four hearings yesterday, I have one tomorrow and one the next day. And we usually have 30, 40 opponents to a wireless facility concerned about all kinds of issues. And Verizon Wireless does whatever it can to get these networks built to meet the capacity demands. We usually try and build a network that's two years ahead of the demand. These sites in this area are already beyond capacity. Your phone works, you get four bars, but you may not, you will not get the data speeds that you're supposed to get. You may not get on the network as quickly as you want to, and your calls will have little gaps and things like that that affect their quality.
Mr. Albright, what is the desire height of the tower?
Right now, and I can let Dwayne speak to that. It's 50 feet.
50, okay.
The height limit in the district, I believe, is 40 feet. The concern is the adjacent rooftop of the tin building that, if you see in the photo simulation, hides the bottom half of the facility. We have to be able, our antennas have to be able to shoot or send their signal over the top of that roof. And the unique circumstances to allow that height, as I mentioned, was the fact that there's the 75-foot PG&E dominant facility adjacent to it. But Dwayne, if you want to say anything?
Okay, before we go forward, do any council members have any questions for Mr. Albright? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, the metallic nature of that roof that we're going next to to try to offset the height of it, we need to be a good 15 feet above that with our antennas in order to not get reflection back into the antennas that cause interference and cause the sites to be less effective. So it's a reason, it's very technical, but it's called passive intermodulation that can be caused by the metallic building roof. So that's the reason for the height above the roof.
Okay, so it's an important technical component of the height for this particular tower. Mr. Opel, what is the highest antenna we have approved in the city of Santa Maria for a cell, cell tower?
For a cell tower, probably around 70 feet. Actually, hello, chief. What do we have at the new PD? We have 110 at the police department.
At the PD, right. There's no residential around there.
Yeah, there's nothing, yeah.
Yeah, there's no residential there.
But, yeah, but for cell, for cell sites, we've gone up to 70.
Somewhere at 16, 70 in that range.
As a planning commissioner, I remember a much higher one, so, yeah.
And we've had larger antennas for when we had an AM radio station out of the landfill. That was like 150 feet, so it depends on the area, though.
Okay, thank you.
So essentially, essentially what we have is disagreement regarding, you know, you believing that you have met the level necessary for an appeal and our staff's assertion that you haven't, correct?
I'm not su, I don't think even the staff would say that there's a level required for an appeal. I believe that we have provided an approvable project and that we, we don't believe that the planning commission's decision, they only, they, the findings that the planning commission makes are related to discrimination of, between carriers, which is completely unrelated. They make a finding about alternatives or gap, I think, which is not in any of your findings. The only finding that they make that's relevant to the seven findings that are required under your code is related to the aesthetics, and to that, they only say that it's visible from the adjacent street. I don't think there's any level when we appeal a project to you. We're asking you to take into account the application information that we provided, decide whether we've met the burdens of the code and met all the requirements of the code, and whether it's an approvable project. The planning department felt it was in November, and we feel it remains that way. We were unable to satisfy the planning commission with respect to their required outreach to the community. We're willing to try again or to provide you additional information as necessary. We don't think the PG&E tower is available. I've been told that several times. You don't have a piece of paper in front of you that says that from PG&E, if that's something that you need. We're very, we strongly believe that this is the right location for this project and it's the right height. We are willing to modify the design if indeed there's an aesthetic concern, and Verizon Wireless has built very attractive water tanks and other facilities that are not discernible as a wireless facility. So I have to say, I think with all of that, that yes, that we overcome the, what I consider the insubstantial findings of the planning commission in a manner that allows you to approve the project and condition it or have us come back with more information.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Albright. Excuse me, Councilwoman Zuniga, I'd like to move along.
Can I?
And we do have, we'll have time to discuss, but I'd like to move it on. Madam Clerk, do we have any written correspondence?
No, we do not.
Okay, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak in favor or in opposition?
We have no request to speak.
I'd like to close the public hearing now and bring the item back to council for a discussion or a motion. And you have some?
I just wanted to offer, thank you, Mayor Protem Waterfield. I just wanted to offer, depending on how the vote goes tonight and your project moves forward and you're interested in having community input engagement about an alternative design to this, I would be happy to help you do that.
Councilman Orton?
Well, I guess, and I'm not sure what we're trying to get here, Councilman Zuniga, and I'm, and even the planning commission, what level of, I guess, approval from the neighborhood? You know, you indicated you've been to the meetings and that 1,200 people show up. I guess the other side of that is, do they all live in the neighborhood?
Exactly.
And should they be participating?
Exactly.
And at what level then would your appointee or you vote for this? Did they have to have 600 signatures of approval, 300 or 200? And I understand you're concerned that they're saying they're a little nervous about going out in neighborhoods and things like that. I've gone out walking neighborhoods, and I'll tell you, it sometimes gets scary when you've got kids coming to the door and you don't know who's, who's there, who you're talking to, whether they're an owner or a neighbor or relative. So from that aspect, I would, I would give them more time to do whatever it is that we're trying to establish. It seems that staff and all the other credentials and the service that they will provide to the citizens, all the citizens wherever they're living, and I think everyone's got, you don't have yours laying out, Jack's got his, and I just dropped mine and broke mine, but everyone's relying on it, and I think he's accurate. Everyone's using their phone. Whether you've got Wi-Fi or whatever, it's just pick that puppy up, and a lot of people are buying data services more and more, increasing what they can do with it. So from that aspect, I'm a little more lenient to say, okay, if that's what this council wants to look at and needs to have assurance that the people in the neighborhood give, you know, a tacit nod of approval, or no, we just don't like that big ugly thing there.
Well, let me add this, because I, as a commissioner for 11 years, I have seen quite a few of these projects come in front of me for approval of whatever tower they had it be, whether it was a flagpole, a monopine, or whatever. I am so baffled by this project that, in my opinion, and from the applicant, they did their due diligence in notifying the people. I think we're punishing them because they didn't do it in a certain way. And what they're doing is providing a service to the city of Santa Maria to make it a much better place to have cell service. And so I think maybe we should be discussing, do we want to go forward and discuss the type of tower that they want to place up there and have them work with staff as opposed to them coming back to city council, so they could get on their way to, to do what they need to do.
I guess I'd be curious, Mayor Protem Waterfield, if Verizon was coming and making the same case that they're making before us now, and this tower was going in your backyard or in your neighborhood, if you would feel the same?
I do, if they did, they have. I've got one there. I have one there. Yes, like the flagpole.
I do too.
Yeah. And it's, trust me, if they wanted to put another one there, I'd love it, because my service is very limited. But no, I, I have no problem with that at all whatsoever.
Mayor Protem, if I could maybe just bring a little bit of clarification on this, I, you know, I do appreciate the comments that I've heard tonight, and I, like Councilmember Zuniga, have walked that neighborhood in 2010, again in 2004, knocked on pretty much every door there without fear and that sort of thing. But I'm not sure that that's something that we require. We certainly don't require that of a developer of a department building or something like this. I think they have gone above and beyond by contacting each of the individual residences with, with mailers rather than just the property owners. So I'm satisfied with, that we've met the, both the spirit and the letter of the law as far as the notifications go. As far as the cell tower itself, it is desperately needed. I mean, believe me, we're in, I just, if you're on an unlimited data plan, go into your provider and watch how much they try and sell you on a limited data plan. They know the data is everything going forward, and, you know, I'm not going to lose my unlimited data plan no matter what. I don't care how many phones they try and give me. So, you know, I'm, I'm keeping mine. But, and I, so, and plus, we do have another 80 units going in right very near this, which is going to be significantly more cellphone usage, et cetera, et cetera. So I think this is good planning for the future. As far as the structure itself, I, you know, 50 feet is fine. There's a 75-foot PG&E tower there right now. This actually, I think, is going to look better than the PG&E tower that's there.
Absolutely.
I am not a fan of hiding cell towers with monopines. I think, you know, let them, let the neighborhood know, this is it, this is it. If you don't choose to get close to it for whatever reason, you know, we're not trying to hide it. If it's the, if it is the council's desire to hide it, I certainly, a water tower would and would certainly blend in better than a monopine would, and especially if, I don't know if any of the other... know if any of the other council members have had a chance to look at the design of the apartment building that's being proposed next to it, but it's going to be a railroad type of design, which would go along with the water tower, if that is the case. Like I say, my preference would be for the regular, just a straight cell tower. But, with that, Madam Mayor Protem, I am ready to make a motion that we did not, that we deny the, or agree that with the appellant, and grant the appeal, which would allow the project be approved as originally recommended by staff.
Do we want to decide whether we want a tower? Because you do make a great point, the water, the water tower with that new development going in the depot would be a nice addition to this, and allow city staff to approve it, and if there's any issues to bring it, just to bring it back as an amendment?
I-
You have some examples?
Oh, you do? Okay.
Well, and we have a pretty good example, the one right out in Orkut, the water tower that's out there now.
Splash and Dash?
No, in Old Orkut.
In Old Orkut.
Oh, oh!
In Old Orkut, that water tower is actually a cell tower, so.
Thank you, Mr. Springer.
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go in the face of everything that I believe in, but a water tower would really blend in.
And that's the right color for the project.
A water, a water tower would really blend in, in this particular neighborhood. So, I would recommend, as the alternative, that we consider to agree, or that we agree with the appellant, grant the appeal, and condition it on a water tower satisfactory, and allow staff to approve the design on that.
Councilmember Boyson is out of motion.
That is a motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
And, do we do, do we do a roll call, resolution?
I think we should.
Yep?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Orak?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
No.
The resolution passes, so, you guys can move ahead. And, the mayor can be called back in? Or does she go home?
You were way off, you said 8:15.
It's gonna be 10.
Really, I heard 10:50.
Okay, the next item will be a report by the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Patino. Members of the city council, your next agenda will be three weeks from tonight, it's not two weeks, it's three weeks, so we have an extra Tuesday in between. It'll be on the 5th of April, 2016. We have a couple proclamations coming before the city council, we have a couple public hearings, one is the Betaravia Plaza Development Agreement, first reading, and then the other one is the annual CDBG Home Investment Partnership Program allocations. So, that'll be a lengthy council meeting on that one. Also, we're putting together a plan for a business cooperation and retention program that'll be coming forward for council's consideration as a regular business item at the next city council meeting. Also, wanted to remind the public, as the mayor mentioned earlier, the One Community Action meeting is open to the public. It'll be March 23rd, a week from tomorrow, at the Forest Square Church, 709 North Courier, and the time would be from 6:30 at night until 8:30. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, reports from council members, Mr. Boyson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, no required reporting.
Yes, on the 3rd, had my muscly trip to LaFco, and there wasn't a lot of activity that pertains to anything up here in the North County. I spoke to the leadership Santa Maria group on the next morning about politics, I was a principal for a day at Jimenez School, delightful time with Richard Ruiz, and actually turned over some concerns with parking and other things, and of course, they're over by the railroad tracks on Carmen, and some of the parents seem to think that that's a pass-through for them, and could be dangerous for the students there. Then, the goal-setting, just say we had our goal-setting. Jack wasn't there, he didn't, he forgot, no.
Ms. Waterfield?
Yes, I read to 62 graders at Miller School for Dr. Seuss, first grade. I substituted for the mayor at Pacific Christian School, read to them, Dr. Seuss, and also at Taylor Elementary School, I read to them. I was principal for a day at Ontiveris, where Mrs. Rebecca Herrick was a principal. I spent a full four hours over there, going from class to class, talking to the kids, and they were asking me questions, it was really neat, I just, I loved it. Later, I took a tour at Vandenberg Air Force Base with Colonel Vivian's of the Flight Support Squadron. She took me to all of the little places that she oversees, and it was just amazing in regards to Vandenberg, because it's a city, but yet it's a Chamber of Commerce, too, for that whole environment, just so much going on over there. And I believe that's it.
Thank you, Mayor Patino. I met with City Attorney Gail Tratillo, and then I met with Chief Martin and Commander Hanson, and a detective regarding the Matador operation. I attended the principal-for-a-day chamber luncheon at the Elks, and of course, was at our goal-setting meeting, which I found very productive and appreciated. I did want to share with viewing public that our community has lost a staunch advocate for working families, represented workers, and those who are often disenfranchised with the passing of Joanne Marmalaho. Joanne was generous with her time, her money, and her talents. She was always up for a challenge, and helped many organizations and nonprofits. For me, Joanne became a trusted friend and confidant, almost single-handedly running my campaigns in 2010 and 2012. My prayers and condolences go out to her sons and to their families. The world will definitely not be the same place without her.
Very true.
Thank you. I attended on March 3rd at 8:00 in the morning, went over to the police station, and with Chief Martin, who sort of ran me through with a few of the, what would you call them? The gentlemen that you had there? That's, that's what the police always call these people. Anyway, and then, that afternoon, the press conference at the police department. On March 8th, I had a community health needs assessment called from Marion Regional, and attended the Operation Matador briefing that afternoon at the police department, the police station. On March 9th, attended quarterly schools meeting, and, which prohibited us, I should have just, I should have done what you did, I just, I thought I should go to the quarterly schools meeting, and, but I did go to the principal-for-a-day luncheon. And on March 10th, we did the council goal-setting workshop, and, March 15th, that's about it. Anything else from the council?
Ben Hayes Show.
I did the Ben Hayes Show this morning, yes, and did Rotary, and that's it. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Ms. Waterfield.